Okay, good evening, everyone. Sego ani buju endio wachea kuekwe. As the Mayor of the City, I offer these words in the spirit of this gathering. Let us bring our good minds and hearts together as one to honour and celebrate these traditional lands as the gathering place of the original peoples and their ancestors. We've been here for Mother Earth since time immemorial. It is with deep humility that we acknowledge and offer gratitude for their contributions to this community, having respect for all as we share the space now and walk side by side into the future. So with that as an official call to order, Madam Deputy Clerk, do we have a quorum?
Yes, Mayor Patterson, we have a quorum. At this time, I'd like to confirm that all members of council are present with the exception of Councillors Boham and Councillor Chappell. From staff, we have Lanning Hurdle, Chief Administrative Officer, Paige Agnew, Commissioner of Community Services, Peter Huganboss, Commissioner of Business, Environment and Projects, Brad Joyce, Commissioner of Transportation and Public Works, Jim Keats, President and CEO of Utilities Kingston, Desiree Kennedy, CFO and City Treasurer, John Bolignone, City Clerk, Jennifer Campbell, Director of Heritage Services, Lisa Capever-Hunt, Director Building and Enforcement, Craig DeJarden, Acting Commissioner, Corporate Services, Luke Allwood, or excuse me, Brandon Forrest, Director of Business, Real Estate and Environment, Jenna Morley, Director of Legal Services and City Solicitor, Ruth Nordograph, Director of Housing and Social Services, Tim Park, Director of Planning Services, Ian Semple, Director of Transportation Services, Chrisa Turner, Director of Recreation and Leisure Services, Colin Reington, Director of Arts and Culture, Mohamed Hassan, Manager of Equity, Diversity and Inclusion, Jacqueline Gremm, Manager of Recreation Programs, myself, Janet James, Deputy City Clerk, Jeffrey Walker, Manager of Taxation and Revenue. Our meeting host tonight is Ian Sullivan and Chris Savern is our technology associate. We will also be receiving delegations from Dr. David Pecora, Shelley Hurstwood, Tim Clark, Mathysia Flatt, Andrew McCann, Carolyn Barnett, David Moore, Crystal Wilson and Ivan Stolcovic. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we were just meeting in committee, the whole closed meeting, we discussed a couple of items. One was the nuisance party by law and also pending acquisition or disposition of land, potential litigation related to third crossing. So with that, I will ask for a motion to rise without reporting.
Moved by Councillor Neal, seconded by Councillor McLaren, that council rise from the committee of the whole closed meeting without reporting.
Those in favour? Opposed? And that's great. Okay, next we will move to the approval of the addits. We have two sets of addits before us. Together, there are a number of additional delegations. There's a motion of congratulations, a couple of items of miscellaneous business, some documents and communications, and also an amendment, one of the items under Report 100. So can I have a mover and a seconder to move both of those addits, please? Moved by Councillor O'Sannick, seconded by Councillor Neal. Those in favour? Opposed? And that's great. Okay, next, are there any disclosures of potential pecuniary interests? Councillor O'Sannick?
Thank you, Your Worship. I, Lisa O'Sannick, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of CAO report, recommend report 100, clause three, graph one, sub paragraph three, asking the city to fund the Kingston Health Sciences Centre as my employer is the provincial government that mandates that any capital healthcare funding must have a municipal contribution. Thank you.
Next is Councillor Neal.
Thank you, and I have shared this with the clerk. I, Jim Neal, declare my potential pecuniary interest in Report 100, item eight, sub clause three, the funding for Kingston hospitals since I am the father, the proud father of a daughter who works in the healthcare field at KGH. Thank you.
Next is Councillor Stroud.
I, Peter Stroud, of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of Report number 100. CEO recommend, Report number eight, clause three, asking the city to fund Kingston Health Sciences Centre as I am employed as registered nurse at Kingston Health Sciences Centre.
Thank you, and next is Councillor Holt.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. I'm Mayor Rita Holland of the Council of the Corporation of the City of Kingston, declare my pecuniary interest in the matter of clause four, Report number 21-284. Closed session item advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose, nuisance party by law as I'm employed by Queen's University.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other declarations of potential pecuniary interest? Okay, so seeing, seeing then, we will, we will move on. But before I, I do, I just will draw council's attention to the fact that we have a very, very full agenda in front of us. We likely have as many as nine delegations. And so I am just letting council know that at this point, my intention will be to recess the meeting somewhere between 10:30 and 11 o'clock tonight, and then reconvene tomorrow night at 6:00 PM. Unless by some chance, we are very close to finishing the agenda by 11 o'clock. That is, that is. Okay, so with that, we have no presentations tonight, so we will move on to delegations. So our first delegation is Dr. David Pecora, President and Chief Executive Officer of Kingston Health Sciences Centre, who appeared before council to speak to clause eight of Report number 100 received from the CAO with effective municipal investment in healthcare initiatives. Just a reminder to all of our delegations, you have up to five minutes to speak. And at that point, then I will open up the floor to questions from members of council. So with that, Dr. Pecora, if you are there, welcome, and you have the floor.
Good evening, and thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, and good evening, council members. And thank you for your interest and concern around healthcare and hospitals in, in Kingston in particular, and focusing on the redevelopment and expansion of, of our KGH site at Kingston Health Sciences Centre. As many of you know, KHSC is an academic tertiary hospital fully affiliated with Queen's University and St Lawrence College, and a centre of excellence for teaching, research, learning and scholarship. KHSC is leading the way in providing innovative, high-quality healthcare. We've also quickly established ourselves as a leader in agile coordinated response driven by current system needs in uncertain times. Our nimble collaborative approach to care was especially highlighted throughout the COVID-19 pandemic response, where provincial leaders and other hospitals came to rely on KHSC, not only for its critical care response, but also for behind-the-scenes clinical developments, and in particular, our nimble response to laboratory needs in the province. This type of provincial leadership will bring Kingston residents the care and services that they need and will help to attract the best and the brightest physicians, nurses, researchers and educators to our city. But this excellence must be augmented by urgently needed infrastructure improvements. Next slide, please. So in Kingston, as you know, we are blessed with a rich legacy and history. Our two hospital sites at KHSC, Hotel Dew and KGH are the two oldest continuously operating hospital sites in the country. Both started in the 1840s. As you know, our Kingston General site was the home of the first Parliament of Upper Canada. With that rich legacy, though, comes a requirement to renew and modernise and in case, in some cases, replace as it becomes necessary. And that's what we're talking about tonight with the Phase Two redevelopment initiative for our KGH site. Next slide, please. You will know from the briefing note that we distributed, and I'm not going to go through that in great detail. Time doesn't permit. But this, this project focuses on our top five current priorities. These are, in many ways, the heart and soul of the hospital in terms of providing critical tertiary care, not just for Kingston, but to patients and family members throughout the region and increasingly from across the province. Our operating rooms, emergency department, labour and delivery, neonatal ICU or NICU, clinical laboratories and bed requirements are all growing and outgrowing our current facility. Next slide, please. This is one of our legacy operating rooms at the KGH site in the Connel Wing, vintage 1950s. And these operating rooms, and we still use a few of them today, this, this room would have been used today. Is, they're amongst the oldest operating rooms, I believe the oldest that's still used in the province. The wooden doors, tile walls, windows do not meet current standards. The electrical infrastructure ventilation challenges make it really difficult, in some cases, a room for a room like this impossible to modernise, expand and meet the needs of today and tomorrow. Next slide, please. We have continued to innovate at KHSC and we've worked very hard to adopt a number of novel technologies. About three years ago, we implemented the DaVinci surgical robot for prostate surgery. It has now grown to be a provincial leader in colorectal surgery, gynecologic surgery, head and neck, and we're currently training our cardiac surgeons to start providing some of, some minimally invasive cardiac procedures using the robot. We're really fortunate to have this machine, not all hospitals do by any stretch. But as you can see, we, this is in one of our largest rooms and it's a tight fit. We don't have adequate storage space for more equipment like this. And the ability to acquire additional robots is really challenged because of our limited footprint. Next slide, please. And what we want to have is larger rooms that are flexible for modular imaging, complex laparoscopic and arthroscopic procedures, the ability to move equipment in and out. And all of this takes space that requires the most modern ventilation and electrical infrastructure, kind of like you see in this image here.
Second.
This, this kind of procedure allows us to bring care closer to home. For example, since we initiated the DaVinci robot, we're doing 50% more prostate surgery, which means that people are not having to go to Ottawa or Toronto for that type of life-saving cancer surgery. They're getting it close to home here in Kingston. Next slide, please. Everybody's heard about our emergency department, and this is what the ramp looks like for EMS challenges, traffic jam during busy times. Homecoming would be one example when we see this. And our emergency department, as you know, is just too small now. It was built for maximum volume of about 120 cases per day. And we're now seeing well over 200 most days. And these people are sicker and have much more complicated medical conditions. There's a lot more mental health challenges, frail elderly. And, you know, we need to move to the future for our ER. And next slide.
It's a, I'm actually gonna, I'm gonna have to pause you there. We're at, we're at five minutes. So I think at this point, we'll, we'll convert into, to question and answers at this point. Okay. Are there any questions from council?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Patterson, and thank you, Dr. Pecora, for your presentation. Was there more that you wanted to share with us? You have a moment, can we ask him that?
Happy to do that.
Yeah, so, so can you, can you ask like more, maybe more like a specific, specific question, right? So.
Well, I just would like to know what, what other, what other components to, to the ask is there for us to, to know? Yeah.
So let me, let me point out a couple of things then. One would be infection control and IPAC standards and moving towards more private rooms, more, more private space for patients and families. And this is really needed in our overcrowded neonatal ICU and our multi-bedded ward rooms. The other thing that I would point out is the, the community social and economic impact of tertiary hospitals like ours. In the US, studies demonstrate that they return about $2.3 per dollar spent in terms of tertiary academic hospitals and, and bring in additional two jobs for every direct job in the hospital. Our current budget is $650 million annually. It's projected over the next few years to go over 800. We currently have 6,000 employees and close to 1,000 medical staff, and those numbers are projected to rise as well. But we, we need the space to do that.
Thank you. Yeah, that's great. Can I ask a question, Mayor Patterson? Dr. Pecora, I really appreciated the tour that your, your team offered recently, and I think about it all the time, and what, what I learned there, and would you be able to tell us, how do you intend to fit all that there? What the buildings there is, what, what buildings are you taking over and how do we picture that?
Yeah. So there are five end-of-life buildings scheduled to be replaced, three internal buildings that are currently KGH operated, and two Queen's buildings. And that will give the footprint for this new tower, which, depending on what the final design plans are, will be somewhere between 10 and 12 stories.
I was really impressed too on the tour, Dr. Pecora, about the integration.
Deputy Mayor, I'm gonna have to stop you there. Two questions for delegation. So I think you're, you're at two, so, so I'm gonna move on at this point. Is there anybody else that has a question? Councillor Hill?
Thank you, Worship, and Dr. Pecora, thanks for joining us tonight. Just, I, I know that I, I've received a number of, of communications from folks about, about whether or not Kingston's the only municipality in the region that's gonna be approached for additional funding. And I, I, I said no, I just want to make sure that I'm correct on that.
So when you look at our patient volumes within our region, about 50% are Kingston residents and the other 50% roughly are from the broader region. And, and so not coincidentally, our ask to the municipalities is 50% Kingston and 50% to the regional municipalities.
Great, thanks very much.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, through you. Thank you, Dr. Pecora. Thanks for all your leadership too during COVID. I know we've heard from you through the media on that, so that's appreciated. I hope you don't mind then that I ask a bit of a, what I think to be a tough question, which is why the municipality would give tax dollars to an institution that, to be frank, takes up lots of prime real estate for very good reason, of course. I'm not questioning any of that or any of the, the merits of what you're proposing. But the heads and beds tax hasn't been raised for, probably before I was born, or over 40 years ago. So maybe if you would, talk to us a bit about the ask in, in sense of why the, the taxpayer would be asked to pay that when tax revenue that we could get, maybe we're getting as much as we could. So perhaps a loaded question, but if you could feel that, I'd appreciate it.
So I think it's fair, I'm a taxpayer too, and I like to see my tax dollars well spent as well. I think, as I mentioned very briefly a minute ago, there are economic benefits to having a hospital like Kingston there, as well as the social and, and academic benefits. So it adds value to a city in lots of ways besides monetary. But there are monetary values for sure. You know, like it or not, there's a provincial formula of 90-10 for construction costs. 100% of most equipment, although Cancer Care Ontario does fund 100% of our cancer costs, and they may be moving towards funding MRI and PET scans. And you may or may not be aware that we're, we have plans to acquire and install a PET scan in the next couple of years. Because we are the only tertiary cancer centre in the province that doesn't have a CAT, PET scanner today, and our patients are going to Ottawa and Toronto. And there's significant treatment delays associated with that. So back to the 90-10. All I can say is it's better than it used to be. The 90-10 formula has been there for quite a number of years. But previously, it was 70-30, and before that, it was 50-50. And I, I'm guessing that the provincial government realised that those shares, 50-50, 70-30, were just too onerous for many municipalities to take on, which is why they've moved to 90-10. And I'm not saying that's easy, it's not easy for us, it's not easy for the city and for you as councillors that have to make these decisions. But it, it is our reality and, and other communities have to do this as well. I think you will have seen in the briefing note that there are quite a number of other communities in the province that do commit substantial budget, budgetary components from their municipalities.
Thank you so much. My follow-up about the briefing note, maybe for context for folks who are tuning in tonight that didn't have a chance to read the report that we have as councillors, could you remind us of the timeframe and the overall budget of, of this project? So it puts in context the ask that you have for us?
So if you go on the ministry website or Government Ontario website, you'll see that our project is listed between $500 and $1 billion. Since that was first posted, we've added some scope. We've added two new inpatient floors and two shelved floors and a rooftop helipad and some other more minor or less visible components. Now, those add-ons are not the expensive part of the bill. The expensive part of the bill is the operating rooms and neonatal ICU. But nevertheless, they do add some cost. And, and like all of us, major hospital building projects in the, in the province are experiencing significant cost escalators because of COVID. We all know that. So it's very, very likely that the cost for our project will be, although it started at the lower end, end of the range, it's likely gonna migrate towards the upper end of the range. And so the local share, and again, these are all estimates because we don't have the final bids in, probably in the, in the range of $170 million, give or take. So that's equipment and the 10% of the construction.
Thank you so much, and thanks again for all you do.
And in terms of timeframe, I think, you know, from the briefing note, you know, again, these are all estimates, but probably not completed until 28 or perhaps 29. And so there's a number of years for us to raise the money in the community from donors, from the city, from other municipal partners. Because it is, it's a huge challenge. It's the biggest project we've ever done in Kingston like this.
Thank you very much. Next is Councillor Hudson.
Thank you, Miss, Mayor Patterson. Thank you for appearing tonight, Dr. Pecora. Could you explain to us how this project is going to be financed? I've heard that part of it is a P3, and I'm wondering if that is accurate.
So the, the model is a standard model that's overseen by both the hospital, in our case, and Infrastructure Ontario. And so right now, we're going through a second or a third, depending on how you look at it, phase of planning to create the construction specifications for the space and what needs to be in there. And that will create a, a very large document of specification outputs that will go out to the market, through RFP, to pre-qualified bidders. And those bidder, biz would normally be a construction firm, a financing partner and an architectural design partner. So that usually there's three partners in these who would come together and put a bid in. That's, that's the model.
Okay. So that does sound like a P3 to me.
Yep.
That being the case, that usually means that the public sec, the public has to pay much more than they would if the, if the government itself took the loan, the construction loan. And so are we going to get a deduction against the amount that we're being assessed with?
So remember, the government's paying 90% of the construction costs, so it's on them to finance that component. And for us, it's 10% of the construction costs. And, and obviously, the more money that we raise through philanthropy and through the community, the less that we might have to finance. And we obviously would prefer not, not to have to go to the market to borrow for this. If we need to do that, our CFO has contingency plans to do that. Because we're always balancing, and you know, this isn't the only thing that's going on for us. We have the Complex Health Information System, which is another regional partnership, which we are not asking the city for. We have an internal financing model for that. And then there's our annual equipment renewals that typically are about $18 million a year to renew and replace everyday equipment. And so all of those things go into the mix. It's not just the tower. But obviously, we want to minimise the, the amount of borrowing that needs to be done. But I think, you know, whether you like the model or not, that's the model that the province uses, the P3. I think there's pretty good evidence, though, that these projects tend to run on time and on cost.
Okay, thank you. So I have to move on. Are there any other questions? Councillor Chappell?
Thank you, through your worship. I appreciate the, the presentation of Dr. Pecora tonight. My question might be a little too far along in the proposal stage, but certainly, medical professionals travel with their specialty from one hospital to another across the province. And so with the number of, of recent new hospital builds being, having recently been built with all the specs for new operating rooms, are you considering reaching out to those hospitals and actually utilizing the existing design? So if you had a doctor, say, from Brampton, come to Kingston, they'd be familiar with exactly what shelf, what, what switch, what lighting would be the same at the operating arena that he was, or she was working out of in, say, Brampton? Or are you looking to redesign and rebuild and, and have a whole new design that is not consistent to other, other operating arenas across the province? So it's a brand new to Kingston, but really, it could be emulated from the province. I'd like to understand if you could save some cost savings with regards to the, the architectural design? It doesn't have to be the design.
Oh, it's a good question. And, you know, it's probably a bit of both, frankly. For one thing, the government has specs on design, what offices, what operating rooms, what patient rooms need to look like. So they have standards and requirements that we have to build to. And so all new construction projects have to, you know, by design adhere to those specifications of the Ministry of Health. So that partially answers your question. It's pretty hard to have all the hospitals in sync because there aren't too many hospitals being built at once. So, you know, for instance, our new MRI suite, it's, it's state-of-the-art best in the province. Is there another one like our newest hour MRI? There isn't yet today. There will be tomorrow. And so the way our team operates that MRI is probably a bit different than the way they do at UHN or the Ottawa Hospital, but they're similar. It's the same thing with surgery, you know? I mean, when it comes to orthopedic surgery, which is what I do, you know, the procedures are similar, we collaborate together, the equipment's not that different. And so could I go and work in another operating room in another city? Yeah, there'd be a bit of a learning curve, but probably not much. And, you know, for example, Brockville Hospital reached out to us just in the last two, three weeks that they needed some additional support for orthopedic surgery. And could we send a surgeon or surgeons to do some soldiers' shoulder surgery to help them out? And the request came in one week and we actually were able to find time in the schedules for two of our surgeons to go to Brockville and operate there and help out. So, you know, that, that kind of thing, as you're suggesting, does happen. And, and where it makes sense.
I, I guess the second follow-up question really relates to what's being discussed tonight at council. And that is 0.6% dedicated tax increase on property tax owners for a period of 10 years, which it, it's, it's a substantial ask on just that component, considering the other $1.3 million that was previously committed over the last number of years is embedded within the budget. And so it's really, you know, 2.5% over that period of time for 25 million. So understanding that we're asking the public to tip in, is there any thought that if the city was issuing this type of, of tax on ratepayers, that that information would then be shared with the, you know, the hospital foundation? And, and those residents paying that tax would actually get a tax charitable tax receipt for that money because it's sort of a forced contribution? But at least they'd get some benefit in addition to having the hospital in Kingston, but a taxable benefit for that contribution based on their property factor?
So it's an interesting question. You know, ultimately, as a taxpayer, you're supporting the provincial component too. So we have to think about that in the whole. Because the provincial component does it, you know, it comes from the tax base as well. In terms of how we can issue tax receipts, I'm not sure that our foundation has the, has the ability or the access to individuals' private information. to issue a tax receipt to every resident of the city. But Tom Zolney, the president of the foundation, is on the call. And, you know, he may or may not have some additional comments to that if the mayor wants to hear that.
Thank you.
So we'll pause. Is there any comment from the hospital foundation?
Tom, can you unmute?
I think the challenge would be that CRA might have an issue with that in that if we're a donation to be received, it has to be freely given. And so if it's imposed on a tax bill, it would not be considered as such by CRA. And so that would be the issue in terms of other than the privacy issue that Dr. Cora mentioned, it would be the fact that CRA would have some issues with that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on my list is councillor.
Thank you. And this question is a follow-up on the P three part. Usually P threes for construction are not so problematic. The problematic aspect comes in the management of the hospital after it's built. Now, can you clarify just to make sure, are we building, are we contributing to build a hospital that will be managed by a private corporation for profit or anything like that? Or will this be a nonprofit management?
So the hospital absolutely remains a hospital in the province of Ontario, a nonprofit registered charity. And it will be managed by the same board and management structure, maybe even the same people that we have now, given turnovers. And the one thing, the one, you know, when you talk about P three versus P four, the Providence Care Hospital, which was a completely new build, also has the maintenance as a fourth element in terms of, and so there is a bit of a management component there. But in our case, because this is a renovation and a partial replacement and not a completely new build. And we're continuing to operate existing facilities, that element is not in our model and it's just a P three.
To hear. Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions? Okay, Dr. Cora, thank you very much.
Welcome.
That will move to our second delegation this evening. We'll invite Shelley Hurstwood, Director of Business Development from the Kingston Economic Development Corporation, will appear before council to speak to clause seven of report number 100 from the CAO with respect to update on current and potential future employment lands. Hurstwood, welcome, and you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and council. And it's absolutely my pleasure to speak before council tonight regarding the city-owned industrial land in support of council report 21-254. So Kingston Economic Development, as you know, our core functions are to support small business entrepreneurs, business retention expansion, and investment attraction. We work with businesses of all sizes and to support their strategies. Through the City of Kingston and Kingston Economic Development Strategy, we are focused on the strategic priorities of sustainable manufacturing and health innovation. As we build out these sectors and are actively seeking opportunities, it is essential that Kingston remain investment ready and have a continued supply of serviced ready land. The City of Kingston has a long history of maintaining a healthy supply of industrial service land, which is allowed for the successful establishment of companies such as Canada Royal Milk and Frulee. The past successes in foreign direct investment have been a catalyst for some of the few current and future interested Kingston, with Kingston having a reputation for being a good city to work with, for being a city that can support businesses being established, and also for ongoing company support. In addition to all of this, this actually led to a number of third-party rankings with Financial Times ranking Kingston as number one small city for foreign direct investment, and the 2026 Lectures ranking Kingston as one of the top 20 Canadian cities to invest in. This is a really exciting time for Kingston right now. For the past, we have had an unprecedented interest in Kingston. At the end of two, three, we had over 80 inquiries and had about the same number of leads generated through outreach activities. Of the changes that we've seen in particular this year, there is a large, there's an interest in larger parcels of land. So 50% of the investment inquiries were seeking over 10 acres of land. And of that, 20% are seeking over 20 acres. Interest in Kingston is a result of a combination of many things. It's a combination of past successes, it's shortening supply chain, certainly coming out of COVID. It's our very unique value proposition with our R and D capacities, workforce, which is probably one of the number one conversations that we have these days, workforce and the rise of mid-sized cities. In particular, I would note that with the cost and the limited availability of land in urban centres such as Toronto or Montreal, there is a real push right now, driving businesses to look outside of those urban centres, or maybe previously they haven't. And they're looking regionally at other opportunities. And I know we've all said it a thousand times, but Kingston is really strategically located. And as we're looking into the, into the future, we really expect this trend to continue towards the rise of the mid-sized cities. And I think really Kingston is a leader in this, especially in eastern Ontario. Our attributes as they align to our force, and in particular, I'd highlight our strengths in chemical processing, metallurgy and health expertise, our access to markets, and specialized supports through the R and D. This positions Kingston really in the forefront. In order to accommodate the growth of existing businesses, in addition to the investment attraction, we work alongside the City of Kingston. We work with private landowners and commercial brokers to facilitate investment into Kingston. We are not solely focused on city-owned industrial lands, but look at the city as a whole. Our priority is to land opportunities in Kingston, ensuring the companies and location are best aligned with their needs. I would say right now we're at a very critical time as there's a significant amount of land under negotiation. The current trend is for interest that is for larger parcels, contiguous parcels of lands, 20 acres or more. So for Kingston Economic Development, we are supportive of the recommendation before council tonight. To fast-track and report back the recommendations and appropriately increase our, sorry, to fast-track and report back the results of the employment land strategy review with viable policy recommendations that appropriately increase city supply of employment lands, which may include a boundary adjustment to implicit city-owned lands north of the St. Lawrence Business Park. We're truly excited about the opportunities right now, and certainly as they align to the integrated strategy. Kingston has positioned itself as a leader in climate change and our continued focus on clean opportunities. In addition to the health innovation sector, as we're moving out of the pandemic, will really increase our exposure on a global scale and ideally capitalize on some really growing opportunities and trends right now. So with that, we're just here to support the council report.
Thank you very much, councillor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Patterson. Thanks, Shelley, for your presentation. Is there a calculation of how much land we might need in the future? And how does it impact the conversations we have? Is it, is it something that where you, you see people are investors or opportunities fade quickly? Or are people patient? What kind of market is that? And where are we going? How much land do we need?
That's an excellent question. I know in the report that's before council, the Watson Report, I believe it identified 75 acres to be prepared for that five-year runway. I'd say based on the interest that we're seeing right now, I don't know if that would even be adequate. In terms of your question, are people patient? No. The companies are coming before us. They expect us to be investment ready. And if we're not investment ready, they're moving on to the next community. So when they're coming towards to us for looking at opportunities, they're looking at land, they're looking at location, they're looking at workforce. It is really, if we don't have something or if we have something where we're saying we need a longer runway or we need to go through planning or zoning, the interest will.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other questions?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Hi, Mr. Hurstwood. I'm wondering, can you give us insight on whether companies ever buy private land for some of these purposes? Because the report also talked about plenty of land available, just not by the city. So your perspective would be helpful.
Absolutely. Thank you for that question. So there is absolutely interest in city-owned land and privately-owned land. A lot of the developers aren't as concerned as to who the ownership is. I think some of the challenges with some of the land we have is shape, parcel size, and the structure as to the deal. So whether it's for sale or for lease. Most companies that we're working with are looking to buy.
Thank you.
Councillor Neil.
Thank you. I know that both Queen's and RMC have some very renowned engineers whose specialty is in battery, batteries that are suitable for EVs. I'm curious as to what kind of outreach you may be doing in that realm. And I know that we have some companies here in town that are also involved in that.
So you're touching on one of my favorite subjects. And so we have a very strong investment team, and one of the priority sectors we are looking at is very actively is the EV battery space. Especially in line with having LifeCycle here in Kingston, and LifeCycle being a company that has gone from being, gone through the research stages, and now recently just ranked about the New York Stock Exchange, I think it was 1.5 billion at that time. So looking at those opportunities, what are companies that have synergies? What kind of opportunities are that? And then also leveraging the talent, as you mentioned, at Queen's University, the engineering talent. So we have done concerted outreach. I believe we have reached out to 23 companies in this space, we had active conversations and certainly are trying to pursue some opportunities.
Thank you very much. I know that there's potential there because and I don't always speak well of a provincial premier, but I have to say, recognizing the mining opportunities in the north can definitely put us in a, in a strong position. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions from council? Okay, Mr. Hurstwood, thank you very much. Our third delegation this evening, we will invite Tim Clark to appear before council to speak to, again, clause seven, report number 100 from the CAO with respect to the update on current and potential future employment lands. Mr. Clark, welcome, and you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I am pleased to appear before you on behalf of Green Centre Canada, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to provide our perspective on the status of city-owned employment lands. We have had the pleasure of hosting and providing facility tours to Mayor Patterson and a majority of council. But for those unfamiliar with Green Centre, we are a not-for-profit based here in Kingston, whose mission is to help clean tech companies advance and transform their ideas into sustainable commercial products and processes. Different from accelerators and incubators, Green Centre offers highly-trained chemists and chemical engineers carrying out R and D projects for startups, SMEs, and Fortune 100 multinationals in our specialized labs. Since 2014, Green Centre has assisted over 130 Canadian SMEs, several of them in Kingston, who have since raised nearly a billion dollars and created hundreds of jobs, bringing immediate benefits to the economy and the environment. These companies have still have domestic and export sales, demonstration plants that are well on their way to commercial operation. An example of our local impact, which just came up, is LifeCycle. When they first engaged with us in 2016, they were two employees with an engineering diagram that showed how lithium-ion batteries could be recycled into battery-grade materials to be returned to the supply chain. We validated their process in our lab and further developed it prior to making a key introduction to Kingston Process Metallurgy. KPM scaled up their process at their Centre for Advanced Resource Recovery Pilot Plant, which sparked incredible growth. And as Shelley alluded to, they've since raised hundreds of millions of dollars, grown to over 100 employees, and have a market cap of about $2 billion on the New York Stock Exchange. So they now have three sites here in Kingston, including their commercial facility, which is currently one of four in North America. What first drew them here, though, is the wealth of human and fiscal capital and chemical processing and clean tech that exists in our city. That means talent and specialized expertise, equipment and infrastructure, and space to establish their businesses, expand their footprint and grow. Council, Kingston, ECH Dev, and other stakeholders have recognized the strength and depth of experience and are capitalizing on it as evidenced by the Integrated Economic Development Strategy, which includes sustainable manufacturing as a priority sector. We all want to have more life cycle success stories in Kingston. Companies that provide significant environmental benefits while also impacting our local economy. Green Centre has been working with Shelley and her team to help execute on this strategy, supporting discussions and providing information to companies arising from ECH Dev's focused outreach. Through our own business development, Green Centre continues to serve a wide range of companies, some of whom are interested in moving to Kingston. Any company in this sector that does come here, though, will ultimately need serviced land to scale their operations and grow within the city. So to become the recognized destination in North America for innovative companies and sustainable manufacturing, Kingston must do more to attract and anchor these businesses in the city. They need access to expertise and resources, but also well-equipped lab incubation space to prove out their technologies. This is a topic they were just beginning to explore at Innovation Park with various stakeholders in the city, including Kingston ECH Dev. But ultimately, and to wrap up, if we're successful in our collaborative mission, these innovative companies will grow their businesses, creating jobs in our community, and will need land to build their commercial sites. So I encourage you to consider additional employment lands so we can deliver on the city's Integrated Economic Development Strategy. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Okay, Mr. Clark, thank you very much.
Thank you.
So with that, we do have several other delegations, but first I will ask for motions of council to formally add additional delegation. So first, moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor McLaren, that our procedural bylaw be waived in order to allow Latitia Flett to continue to clause one, report number 101, received from the CAO with respect to winter initiatives supporting the homeless community. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Next, moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor McLaren, that again, our procedural bylaw be waived in order to allow Andrew McCann to speak to, and report number 101 from the CAO with respect to winter initiatives in the homeless community. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Next, moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor McLaren, that our procedural bylaw be waived in order to allow Carolyn Barnett to speak to clause one, report number 101 from the CAO, again, with respect to winter initiatives supporting the homeless community. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Next, moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor McLaren, that our procedural bylaw be waived in order to allow David Moore to speak to clause one, report number 101 from the CAO, again, with respect to winter initiatives supporting the homeless community. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor McLaren, that our procedural bylaw be waived in order to allow Crystal Wilson to speak to clause one, report number 101 from the CAO with respect to winter initiatives supporting the homeless community. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Then finally moved by councillor Neil, seconded by councillor McLaren, that our procedural bylaw be waived in order to allow Ivan Stoichkovich to speak to clause one, report number 101 from the CAO with respect to winter initiatives supporting the homeless community. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. So with that, we have now additional six delegations. So next up, we will invite Latitia Flett to speak to council with respect to report number 101 from the CAO, winter initiatives supporting the homeless community. So welcome, and you have the floor.
Thank you. And through you, Mayor Patterson, I would like to thank council for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Latisha Flett, and I'm a board member with OLS. I'm here to speak today about the sleeping cabin initiative and the proposed pilot project at Portsmouth Olympic Harbour. The amount of misinformation, misunderstanding, misinterpretation, and fear that has come out around the sleeping cabinet, cabin initiative are really distressing, so I thought I'd start from the top. I'd also like to invite many questions from councillors so we can all be on the same page moving forward. Historic and current miscommunication and lack of consultations have left deep wounds on both sides of this particular issue. Our livable solutions has been developing a cabin community for over a year. During that time, we've been consulting with lots of stakeholders, including people currently experiencing homelessness, frontline workers who engage with and provide services to the people experiencing homelessness, members of the public and faith groups, among others, to discuss the possibilities of a cabin community that provides supportive transitional housing. We'd been unable to make solid plans until council-directed staff to consider a sleeping cabin project in late October 2021. Since then, we've been very busy developing proposals and securing Since then, we've been very busy developing proposals and securing commitments. The potential site at Portsmouth Harbor was officially identified early last week and a site visit on the 10th confirmed it as a potential site. Unfortunately, the rapidity of all this has meant that our livable solutions was unable to do as much community consultation as we would have liked. And so we've had more misunderstandings as a result. So the reason we're putting forth the idea of a sleeping cabin community at Portsmouth Olympic Harbor or elsewhere is that we believe we can set people up for success by having small communities of residents living together and supporting each other and being supported while staying safe and warm in their own cabins. We can't and don't claim to be following best practices as there are none for this particular situation. We're watching other models like this, however, and learning what we can from them. We're also in consultation with healthcare providers, including Queen's Faculty of Health, to create strategies and plans around getting our residents cohesive, appropriate care that can put them well on the path to permanent housing. Many of the people we aim to serve with the sleeping cabin community are not ready for the traditional housing first system and may not be a good fit for the degree of congregate living inherent in the traditional shelter system, which is kind of chaotic and disruptive for anybody, just in its very nature. Many of these people that we want to help would also need assistance completing their instrumental activities of daily living. So we intend to involve as many supports as possible, every resident in a cohesive, coordinated way. Every community, so every site would have its own care coordinator on site whose job it would be to make sure each resident is connected to and able to engage with all available services. This includes being part of meetings with service providers to act as an advocate and ensure that wraparound comprehensive care truly is being provided. Service providers and care coordinators, caseworkers, et cetera, will all be invited to attend regular meetings to ensure continuity and appropriateness of care. Our work thus far has taught us that there's a real need for advocacy on behalf of those experiencing homelessness. Advocacy to make sure they're receiving appropriate care in consideration and that the supports in place for them really are wrapped around and coordinated. We have models for cabins that provide heat and electricity, which have been seen and inspected by city staff and fire rescue personnel. Using a communal bathroom, shower room and kitchen setup means we can deploy faster with fewer permits and construction holdups, as well as keep water and sewer hookups to a minimum. Our livable solutions agreed to review the Portsmouth site on the understanding that were no current tenants who'd be using the space that was proposed for the cabin residence use. In closing, I urge counsel to approve a pilot project of sleeping cabinets, be it at the Portsmouth Olympic Harbor or elsewhere. I'd also like to take this opportunity to urge counsel to approve a warming center. Last winter was relatively mild, but it had devastating effects on many people who were unable to keep themselves safe and warm. We have way too many people on the streets and in the shelters. We need some new and effective means of keeping people safe this winter. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Latisha, and apologies for Ms. Brennan's here for saying earlier. Okay, are there any questions from counsel? Ms. Chris Wood.
Thank you, Your Worship, and through you. Thank you very much, Ms. Flett, for giving us those details. The details were good. When, when you said that there would be a care coordinator there on site with them, does that mean that the care coordinator, care coordinator, sorry, stays overnight there? Or do they just come in the morning and then leave in the evening sometime?
We would anticipate this being a paid position because it's intense and requires a lot of work and the handling of sensitive information. And so it would be more of a, like, I'm going to say nine to five, but realistically, those aren't exactly the hours that we're going to follow. So they'd be on hand to do that part during the day. We would have people as part of the community, we're going to select some residents who were like really helpful and really easy to get along with, who would be there to support the residents on site. And we'd also, like Crystal, myself, our board members and other volunteers would be on staff, or sorry, would be on site frequently.
Okay, thank you. And when you said about how like there'd be support groups there, right? Like service support groups, where would they be meeting the residents? Like, would that be inside Portsmouth Olympic Harbor? Or where would they be providing the support?
Right. So a lot of that's going to depend on COVID regulations, right? So people could meet with their care providers either in their sleeping cabin, in the common area that we're going to have or the, you know, we've been told we could have at POH, which would also include like a kitchen. So there's that. There's also space outside, like a lot of service providers have been meeting their clients outside, unfortunately, just with view to COVID restrictions. Ideally, like in a permanent or like, you know, our ideal solution, we would love to have individual sized meeting rooms so that people could have an exam by healthcare provider, or they could speak confidentially and privately to caseworkers or care providers, advocates, family members, et cetera.
All right. Thank you very much.
Next is Counsel Neil.
Thank you very much. And you're right, COVID has affected everything we do these days, as for a couple of years. The community that built, the tent community at, previously, I know that they were able to, to have quite a few not-for-profit organizations in town work collaboratively with KFLNA, Public Health, HARS, mental health and addiction. Have you reached out to those organizations and will they be part of your wraparound service for your clients or your tenants?
That's an excellent question. We've absolutely been reaching out. That's, that was what I was trying to get at when it's been hard to shore up commitments without, until we knew whether this could actually be even considered a possibility, it was really hard to get people to sign on the dotted line, right? So, but now we're able to go back and get more commitments. But actually, some of the frontline employees have told us that they, they would love to have a place where they could come and find their clients regularly and know that they have a roof over their head and are warm at night. So there's definite willingness on their part. And in some cases, I know it's going to make their job easier if they don't have to find their client before they can try and provide services.
That, that's a good point because I know now we have outreach workers that taxpayers pay for, but they must spend hours in the wooded areas looking for tents and at least this portion of people will, will be, will have a semi-permanent address and be easier to find. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next is Counsel Doran.
Thank you and through you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your presentation, Ms. Flett. So the, so you guys have been working on this project for a year and I know staff have also been reaching out to a lot of different community groups, trying to find a location for this. At the end, this was such a rushed project and created so much frustration, which is what you, which you mentioned at the very beginning and also led to a lot of misinformation. If we were to step back a little bit and, and give you some more time, what, what would you do different and where do you think the, what, what's the biggest kind of component that's missing for this to be successful? Because I'm sure that anybody is involved and cares about unhoused people, really wants this project, any pilot project of this kind to be successful. So, so taking a bit of a step back, what can we do to make sure that this is a success?
I think ideally it would have been great to be able to reach out. Like, we know the Portsmouth community in particular has an amazing residents association or a neighborhood, I forget what they call them, but I know that they're very active. They have meetings. They advocate for themselves really well. They can lobby really well. So to have been able to reach out to them even would have been great. We were able to reach out to Cork and the other, some other tenants of Portsmouth Olympic Harbor, but after we met with city staff, so the ball had already started rolling. It's hard because we've had to sort of keep the ball rolling to, to try and gain traction. But ideally what we like to do is go out in advance and do some consultations. So ask the neighbors what their, what their direct concerns are. We were able to do a lot of this on Sunday at a really informal meeting that came together really last minute. But find out what the concerns are, get an accurate picture of what's going on. So who's using what part of the facility? That maybe sort of the left hand isn't always aware of everything the right hand does. So to be able to talk to all the hands involved is always a really great way to move forward. And it cuts down on a lot of the sort of affront or the, the fear and surprise that people have when something sort of lands on them. And to go out with education too and explain why we want to have this model and the science behind the pieces that we're trying to pull in and why we think this is, this is worthy.
Any other questions? Counsel Hill.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Flett, for your presentation. The one thing that, not one thing, there's a couple of things. But one of the things that has me a little bit concerned is, is around the location. Because the clients that you serve historically, you know, have not spent a lot of time in that, in that area, right? So I don't know that these are clients that would typically use the integrated hub. But even if they're not, there's certainly likely folks that have spent, that spend most of their time downtown or somewhere in that vicinity. So I'm wondering about sort of folks getting to that, like clients getting to that site and that location. And, and whether or not, you know, at the end of the day, that location will be a discouragement for people to access those, those units.
Also a good question. I don't really foresee a problem with that. I, I run into my friends that I know don't have homes all over the city. It's even in like Amherstview, it's amazing the places I run into people. They, they really get around when they need to and want to. Transit is, does run. The college isn't far away. It's a good transit hub. There's always taxis. There's bikes. There's foot power. I don't think it's really going to be a problem. And then with the, sort of the advantage of COVID means a lot of services have gone mobile. And so they can sort of come to the clients. The other thing I know is that people have a safe place to keep a bus pass. They enjoy using transit because they enjoy being able to get around the city. And I know a resident in Portsmouth pointed out, she was concerned that the, the bus stops were all uphill from where we were proposing to set up. But there's lots of these, lots of areas in the city that don't have any bus service whatsoever. So a little win is, is still significant.
And one other question, thank you for that. And one other question. So you know how scarce the resources have been and your folks are trying to access these resources to provide lots of service and very good service. And, you know, I really want to extend my appreciation. I'm sure all the counselors do for that, that work. But let's say, let's use the, the warming center as an example. So if, if we divert money to this project, then, you know, potentially, that's money potentially that could go to sort of an expanded warming center or more motel rooms or, you know, more focused on some of the services that we're already providing, maybe and provide some ability to enhance those services. Cause I know there's lots of dissatisfaction with different elements of that. Like, how do you sort of respond to that? Like, that we're almost kind of, you know, distributing our resources and, you know, too thinly to different projects and that this one might actually end up not serving as many folks as we could if we, if we, if we directed it differently.
That's, that's a good point. And it's especially at this time of year. It's kind of tricky to look at maybe putting 10 people in cabins versus being able to put 12 or 16 people in a motel or a shelter or something like, especially in the winter, running those kinds of numbers is particularly hard. I think we do need more overflow options, like we, we need to have more spaces for people to not freeze and not lose limbs in the winter and be safe and dignified. But I also think we need to look at some long-term solutions because I don't think living in an emergency shelter is anybody's idea of a life or, you know, a fulfilling existence. And it's, it's not what the shelter is designed to, like, it's not what it's designed to do. It's labeled an emergency shelter. That's, that's how its programming is run. That's what it's there to do. So I think we need to look at the immediate, but we also need to look how to move forward in a different way. So we have more people transitioning from homelessness and able to move into different spaces. And unfortunately, yeah, resources are spread very thinly because there's a lot of people that need a lot of help.
Yeah, I agree. I agree with that. Thank you very much.
Okay, next is Counsel Strick.
Thank you, Your Worship, and thank you, Ms. Flett. And this is definitely something we all would like to find workable solutions for. So I just like to focus on one aspect. It was first question Counsel Hill asked about location. Because also something you said in your presentation that you were happy that there was a site visit and there was a city site that was identified. And if, if the site works, then great, then we've got a workable site. You've got a midhem and project. Is, if there were options on location, do you think, despite what you've already said about them having access to transit, none of them have their own vehicles, that's for sure, because if they had their own vehicles, they'd sleep with them and, or if they had their own vehicles, they might also have a place to live. So, so we know they're, they're not of the class of car 30, which is a good thing. But, and they do, and I agree, you do see them around the city. But would it not be an advantage if we could find a location even closer to the, to the downtown, like the center of town, which let's, let's be honest, that's where the, wherever the people congregate is where you will see the, the homeless even, you know, during the day, like everybody else, they go to where the activity is. So,
So, thank you.
Yeah, the question is, if we could find a location that was somehow closer to downtown, would that be preferable?
Ms. Flett.
It would definitely be something we'd be, we'd love to look at. Like, we're not turning anything away at this point. Something closer to downtown would be good because like you say, that's where activity is. That's where things happen. It's also where a lot of services already exist. So the St. Mary's Parish Center, and I believe it's St. Andrews, but I always mix it up, the name, at Clergy and Princess, they both have really effective outreach programs. They've, they've done a lot of good relationship building in the community. So there's definitely reasons to keep people downtown. By the same token, I think it's also a good idea to have options where people can go in different places around the city. Because I think one of the things we've seen at the ICH is that when there's a lot of people who need a lot of help, they can easily overwhelm one site. So in a way, having them a little bit spread out and making more things available in more places is going to reduce load on one place in particular.
Thank you. Just, yes, thank you. I just note that it's four kilometers to downtown roughly from Portsmouth Olympic Harbor. So that's why I asked. Thank you.
Are there any other questions from counsel? Okay, Ms. Flett, thank you very much. With that, we'll move to our next delegation. We will invite Andrew McCann to speak to counsel again with respect to winter initiatives supporting the homeless community. Andrew, if you are there.
Hi.
You are. Welcome and you have the floor.
Yeah, can we have the camera video turned on? Okay, great. So hi, it's, I'm Andrew. Thank you for having us. This is
Eva, I'm Eva.
And Ellie and Isaac, our sons. We live right across the street from Portsmouth Olympic Harbor.
And I thank you for giving us the opportunity to speak to you this evening. You've heard me speak before to city council. My name is Eva Perkey. And I've spoken before on issues of homelessness. I'm a family doctor at Queens Family Health Team and a researcher who has worked with people experiencing homelessness, including at the Integrated Care Hub. I spent three hours this morning at the Integrated Care Hub swabbing people for COVID-19. And most importantly, I'm a Portsmouth District resident and I live right across the street from the harbor building. With a caveat that as already has been discussed, this proposal does not actually solve the issue of homelessness in Kingston. It does offer something important to people experiencing homelessness. It offers another choice, which some people may take or some people may not, as was discussed by the previous speaker in terms of where at least some people can spend the winter in a place that can protect them from freezing to death. And I can give you the story of a gentleman who was homeless for the first time last winter and who my colleague, whose toes were removed in my colleague's office because they were, they were completely frostbitten. Hopefully this would provide a place that you can protect them from that and can offer some useful services as well, treating people with integrity and dignity and respect. It also offers Portsmouth District an opportunity to be a very small part of our community's response to supporting unhoused people, which is something we haven't had specifically before and which is something I support as well. I work with Dr. Rosemary Wilson and Dr. Colleen Davidson, who are both Queens professors, who are committed to evaluating this project and to see, seeing the impact on our community and also on the unhoused population. And I know that they are awesome, committed professionals. I support this project and I would like to work with my neighborhood, including some of the people who came to the meeting on Sunday and voiced their support to make this project a success.
So we did have this somewhat spontaneous form of democracy on Sunday across the street at the site. Isaac and Ellie, our sons, were also there. They play around the harbor. They play in the park nearby. There were 30 very concerned citizens there and we heard a lot of concerns, which you'll probably hear in the letters you've been, that have been submitted and from other delegations tonight. There are serious issues around the boats, the St. Lawrence Two program, walking at night nearby, some of the other matters that have been raised during the discussion so far. But I think through that community meeting, which was mostly 30 people who lived within a block of the harbor building, I think most people there came around to the idea that the greater concern was that on the edge of winter, we actually need to act now and move ahead and not defer this. and move ahead and not defer this and make a decision tonight to put these cabins in there so that at least the disabled people who I know are being targeted to live there will have a place to stay warm. I want to close by just sharing a little story from the boy and Eva's mom, the boy's grandparents, of the beginning of a refugee sponsorship project during the Rwandan genocide that brought refugees to Canada, to Bishop's University and Champlain College. It was a project different from this, but similar in the sense that there were a lot of unknowns, a lot of risk, a lot of fear about bringing people traumatized by war. We needed to need to reach thousands of dollars to support them. They needed to help integrate them into a North American cult society. And they had a big meeting like there will be tonight, much discussion about all the fears, all the risks, all the reasons not to do it. But there were a lot of reasons to do it, a lot of reasons why we need to use our privilege to offer these kind this small thing that we can do in our village here. And they decided towards the end of that meeting, somebody proposed that they defer the decision and not decide and do more studying and do more research to decide whether to go ahead. And there was fear in Mary Eva's mom's heart at that moment because she knew if it went to committee, it probably would not go ahead. And she looked across the table and saw another young woman there, a young woman there, a student who had the same fear in her eyes. And she decided, no, we need to push this ahead. We need to do this thing. We need to bring some of those Rwandans here this year, not next year, not after studying it. And so they did. They went ahead and it was hard and they've brought dozens and dozens of people to Canada since then through that project. And even I met because of that project, these kids are here because of that project because we met loading somebody's van, moving van together. And these kids are going to be playing across the street and hopefully along with us, meeting these new members of our community this winter, doing things for them, supporting them because of the risks that people are willing to take. So I encourage you all to take that risk tonight. There are unknowns. There are fears. People are going to have strong opinions why they don't want this in their backyard. But I hope that as somebody who lives right across the street, like we can carry forward the energy that we saw on Sunday and welcome these people and support them and make this private project a success.
Are there any questions?
Thank you, Mayor Patterson, and thank you to all of you for the presentation this evening and thanks for your efforts to hear those community voices. I'm curious mostly about the, given that you know the neighborhood and also Eva, you mentioned your your work at the Integrated Care Hub. If you could just maybe comment on what any similarities or differences that you you foresee with this new project and anything, any lessons learned from that that you would want to share with any community members who who, you know, obviously have had concerns at the at the care hub as well.
Sorry, I think what's most important here is that it would be a matter of choice, right? So it's not about saying we're going to move 10 people to Portsmouth Harbor when all of the services are somewhere else. It's about identifying whether or not, which there probably are 10 people who are interested in coming to Portsmouth Harbor. And I think that with the work, my just my clinical work, right? My experience overwhelmingly and including this morning at the IHC is is that if you treat people with respect and respect their integrity and their ability to make decisions, then actually they behave in a respectful and in, you know, way that demonstrates integrity, right? So if we give people the option of choosing a place and they choose it, then presumably they will want this to succeed as much as we do.
Next is councillor Neil.
Oh, and thank you very much, Andrew and Eva. I know you've been very active in helping to try to find solutions for homelessness, and I appreciate that. I'm curious as to did you, in the community, receive any kind of information regarding this? When did you first hear that this was happening?
So we heard on Thursday, Crystal Wilson actually reached out to me because we know each other from other projects. And that was the first time I heard about it. And, you know, she was surprised by it, the everything's had moved very quickly last week. And my immediate response was, wow, that's a big deal. There are going to be a lot of concerns. I understand there's a council meeting next week. And I started, you know, talking to neighbors. Neighbors started asking me if I knew about it. And, you know, thankfully, Crystal was available on Sunday morning with like just the afternoon before we gave notice. And then I started walking around the village, really just like the two blocks within the of the radius of the of the Harbor Building. And everybody who I talked to, who happened to be home, who I ran into and invited, basically came. Like, people were very interested. A lot of concerns were raised. I'm sure there are other concerns that you'll hear from people that were not raised, but many, many were. And Crystal had a lot of the answers. She didn't have all of them, but she had a lot of the answers. It was clear that their organization, which we're not part of, has done a lot of homework and a lot of preparation. And that the spirit of that democratic moment in our community, it really felt like even people who were skeptical were ready to support and try to make this work. And they were reassured by the fact that this is just a pilot for the winter, that we all recognize that this there can't be those cabins there when Cork happens next summer or other kinds of events, that this is a pilot. But I think that gives us all the more motivation as a community. And I know there are detractors, but there's a lot of us here, including some lovely 80 and 70 and 80 year old gentlemen and women who talked about baking and there's a physician who talked about coming down and helping. You know, those people, based, I think, together, informally and perhaps formally through a community association group that could be formed, like, we would like to support and make this successful so that the pilot can be proven to work.
So basically, there there wasn't an outreach or public consultation prior to the public announcement?
No, and I don't understand the backstory on that, councillor Neil. But what I do know is that there's a new, you know, obviously outbreak of COVID in our city that's across the community and including in the population at the Integrated Care Hub. And winter is really coming. And although it's been a long fall, like we we can't really avoid that now. So I'm assuming those factors, there's no perfect solution here. There's no ideal location. You're going to have a hard time finding a community that's going to, everybody in that area is going to welcome this with open arms. So I expect that at some point, like, I know that the facility had something to do with the decision, councillor Neil. I know Crystal might speak to this, but my understanding from what they said on Sunday was that they were skeptical originally about the site, but then they saw how almost ready to go, the facilities, the bathroom, the shower, the the spot for a kitchen is at the in the alleyway where the cabins will be set up right in front of the cabins will be in front of that alleyway. And it's like, it can be ready in a very short time. And so I think that ready to go, given that we're about to have freezing cold nights, was part of, I assume, I can't speak for staff, but I assume that's why they moved quickly and made a decision along with their partners.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Are there any other questions? Okay, and oh, yes, councillor Kylie, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor Patterson. Through you to Andrew and Eva, I'm wondering, Andrew, specifically to you, you mentioned the idea of deferral. If we were to take maybe a week or two longer on making this decision as council, do you think that the extra time would actually be a benefit to our livable solutions, to your neighborhood, to get more information out? Because it seems like in a very short time, with a relatively small number of people, maybe the the perspectives on this change. So if there there's a week or two more, do you think that type of timeframe could give additional opportunity to reach out to your neighborhood and garner more support?
Yeah, it's a great question, councillor Kylie. I I obviously I don't have the answer. That's going to depend on everybody in the community and their responses. My sense of it is that the risks and the challenges and the challenges of having any local community, especially the people who never live nearby, accept this anywhere in town, they're not going to go away one week later or two weeks or because of consultation. I'm not saying there shouldn't have been consultation. There absolutely should have been consultation. My fear is that the people who don't want this to happen in their backyard will rally and will push back very hard over the next week or two weeks or whatever amount of time you give. It will get colder. People, those people won't have access to the cabins for that much longer. I'm not sure what useful can be done unless there's some fundamental, you know, structural issue here. But I think that's why they chose the spot, because the facilities are ready for it. You know, there's there's going to be risks. There's going to be challenges. And I think the more time we give, the more time the people who just don't want to see this in their community. This is a really privileged area where we live. And there's there's a mix, a mix of of people here, obviously students as well and renters. But there are a lot of, you know, people who have never seen this type of thing in their neighborhood and there's fear, right? And so part of what the magic was on Sunday's meeting, which was a spontaneous meeting, was that Crystal and Tish were there and they answered questions calmly and with information. And people who had those concerns, not all of them came around, but many of them were like nodding their heads like, yeah, we can do this. We can come together. So I'm I'm not, how can you recreate that kind of a spirited meeting like that? I don't know. But I I'm guessing that the people who don't want it to happen will push very hard, however long you give them. So I, again, I would encourage you to take a risk that there are enough of us here in this village that will support it and that this is doing the right thing. And sometimes the right thing's not popular.
Thank you.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you very much for the delegation and sharing your perspective because it's a perspective we haven't heard too much about. And that was, I learned a lot from listening to you. How do you think substance abuse can be controlled on site? Because that's definitely a fear that I've read in the emails that we've been sent this week.
Fair, fair. And I mean, part of the answer to that question is going to depend on what services are available for people. So substance use is a reality among many, not all homeless people who experience homelessness, right? So it's going to depend on who the community is and what supports are available to help them. That said, you know, I have every reason to believe that there is substance use happening around the harbor anyway. And because we find paraphernalia that's related to substance use around the harbor zone, I don't think that that in and of itself is a sufficient reason to make this project not go forward.
Okay, thank you very much. And I know that staff really, you know, like did their best to try to come up with this site compared to all the other sites that may have been possibilities. In your opinion, which site do you think would would have been best for this pilot project of sleeping cabins?
I don't think we have an answer to that. I think that that the kind of key variable is is choice. There are going to be people who do not want to move to Portsmouth and they will not move to Portsmouth. Nobody's going to be forced to move to Portsmouth. And there may be some people who would if you had put it, I don't know where, at the Memorial Center, wherever else. I don't know what the other sites were considered. But if it had been put somewhere else, you might have had different people who wanted to move there. You know, I suppose in an ideal scenario, obviously, the ideal scenario is to house people. But failing that, the ideal scenario would be to have multiple sites where people from different demographics and with different social relationships could go that made sense to them based on what their needs were.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? See none. Thank you both very much. And with that, we'll move to our next delegation this evening. We will invite Carolyn Barnett to speak to council and with respect to the initiative supporting the homeless community. Miss Barnett, I see you there. Welcome. And you have the floor.
Good evening. I've lived in, I'm a Portsmouth villager. I've lived in the village for 26 years. And given the complexity and volume of the concerns raised that I'm going to raise on behalf of the villagers, we request formal written responses as well as a community meeting as soon as possible. And I won't answer questions. I am just reading the concerns. Why has there not been zero community consultation regarding this pilot project? Most of us heard of the project through the CKWS news when the mayor made the announcement that Portsmouth Olympic Harbor had been selected as the site for a pilot project of 10 sleeping cabins. What site selection and planning criteria was used to shortlist Portsmouth? Location was the Memorial Center and other city Kingston property holding contemplated for this project? Given that a change to the permitted use, which is a park, would be required to accommodate this project? When was this discussed and approved, either at planning committee or at council? Given that the location of the pilot project was bound to be contentious, why wasn't the Portsmouth District Association engaged at the planning stage or the community at large? If members of the homeless community prefer not to access services in the shelters or the integrated hub, have they been asked why? Could the money be being allocated for the Portsmouth Olympic Harbor retrofits in a building well beyond its useful life be used to repurpose the shelters and making them more active, attractive and appealing to the users? Has the partnership with Our Livable Solutions been ratified? And what are the service providers' responsibilities relative to the pilot project? How will cabins be ready for occupancy, knowing that they are being manufactured elsewhere and today is the 16th of November? Additionally, site work will be required along with modifications to the common area, washrooms and showers. To facilitate the pilot project, council is being instructed not to enforce the city's site plan control bylaw number 2010 to 17 and zoning bylaw during this period of December 1st through April 30th, 2022. As this is precedent setting, was this approved by council? What assurances do the villages of Portsmouth have that this location will not be selected as the preferred permanent option when the pilot project comes to an end? We've been advised that some of the occupants of the cabins have accommodation challenges and mobility issues. To what degree are the sleeping cabins or the supporting POH common areas accessible? Or will funding be required to address accessible issues? We are advised that sleeping cabins will be installed in front of the Form of Bar 53, presumably on the concrete pad, which is extremely windy. How will they be affixed? And isn't this a fire lane? Boters have entrusted the city of Kingston with safety of their assets in the Portsmouth Olympic Harbor. What assurances will boat owners have that their assets are safe, given the introduction of the sleeping cabin project? We're advised that the sleeping cabins will contain heating, lighting, smoke detection and internet access. How will the cabins be powered up? Who will be responsible for property managing the cabins, including, for instance, ensuring smoke detection units are functioning? Are the sleeping cabins assigned to individuals by evening, week, month? Or are they available on a first come, first served basis? And who will be managing the assignment and occupancy process? If an occupant is creating a problem for others, either at the site or in the village, what escalation process is in place to manage or remove that individual? As the occupants of the cabins will most likely be without transportation of their own, how will they be transported for food, medical appointments, prescriptions and mental health programs? What consideration has been given regarding additional security at the site and in the neighborhood while the site is operational? If the occupants are to be access to be accessing the Portsmouth Olympic Harbor washrooms and shower facilities, what considerations are being given to additional cleaning, provisional supplies, garbage removal, management oversight of these facilities and use thereof? There was some talk about the occupants being able to use the kitchen. To that end, what oversight will be provided there? Will the area proposed for sleeping cabins be contained by a security barrier? And if so, what is being proposed? The Portsmouth community has been asking for years to have the lighting on the common and park repaired and or replaced, as now only two of the original large light poles are operational. Is council contemplating relamping and relighting the common or addition, adding additional lights to the site? Is council considering an increased bylaw and or police presence, both at the proposed site and in the village? Is a curfew being contemplated for the proposed site? Given the size of the sleeping cabins, where will the occupants' personal belongings be kept at the site? Given what we witnessed at Bell Park, what assurances can be made that the cabins will be removed at the end of the pilot project? The Portsmouth Village Green is a well-used community space frequented by dog walkers, parents and children accessing the place structure, and exercise club, members of the public who use the picnic tables and benches that overlook the harbor as well as villagers gathering and meeting place. How does the council intend to preserve and safeguard this space for its continued and intended use?
Three seconds.
The demographics of Portsmouth Village has changed over the years. It now houses many retired single females who have chosen Portsmouth Village for their home. In no small part to the beauty of its location and safety, a close knit community brings to their lives. How will the city of Kingston ensure the safety of the villagers after the pilot project is introduced? What COVID protocols are being implemented as far as vaccination, attestation, cleaning, masking and distancing? What?
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to interrupt you there. It's five minutes. So at this point, I will just open it up if there are any.
Thank you. That's most of the the points we needed to make.
Okay, that's great. Thank you very much. Are there any questions in council? Okay, councillor Chappell.
Thank you, sir, your worship. Ms. Barnett, I would like to know what other questions you would you're planning to ask because I was taking notes feverishly and I'm very interested in knowing your concerns.
Sorry. We were just wondering about the cost and budget for the pilot project, including sleeping cabins, hydro powder, the cabins, resources required to manage project startup ongoing, land ground preparation to affix the cabins, additional security and bylaw presence, additional cleaning and provisions for the washroom and shower facilities, augmented garbage is no removal, insurance, decommissioning the cabins at the end of the pilot project and making good the lands on which the cabins are fixed during the pilot project. And also, what lessons have been learned through the installation and operation of the ICH? If we were to canvas neighbors in the vicinity of ICH, what would they advise Portsmouth villagers regarding the proposed pilot project?
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions in council? Okay, see none. Ms. Barnett, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we'll move to our next delegation. We will invite David Moore to speak to council with respect to winter initiatives supporting the homeless community. Mr. Moore, welcome. And you have the floor. Mr. Moore, welcome. And you have the floor.
Mister Mayor and councillors, thank you for this opportunity to speak to you tonight. Uh, I support trialing this progressive project. But I will be blunt, uh, it seems an outlandish idea to plop it down in the middle of a residential public park. With a boat marina and gas station. Some say that we must immediately follow the Kitchener's better tent city example. Or people will freeze to death without these ten huts at Portsmouth Olympic Harbor. It's not hard to find different stories. Parsing out some Pollyanna media coverage suggests to me. That the Portsmouth location is not worth a trial. Kitchener is not favored with marinas for citing homeless camps. So the project was first set up in an empty industrial parking lot. Now it enjoys grassy, treeless splendor beside the four-lane Conestoga Parkway, the city's major freeway. Even Kitchener City Councilman in its own hasty secretive way. Didn't put vulnerable homeless folks beside tens of millions of dollars of boats and equipment. Whose owners pay storage to the direct directly to the city. And it's beside a children's playground. And next to six long concrete piers without railings that ice up and invite serious falls and drownings. I pray see quotes in Kitchener. Quote, "A quiet suburban area has been turned upside down." Numerous people trying to open car doors and get into cars. A sharp spike in petty thefts, break-ins, needles all over the place. And all this is occurring despite the twenty-four seven presence of one truly valiant supervisor. Living on site. And even she jokes about having to regularly break up fistfights. There has been zero community public consultations of any sort whatsoever. I reference Kingston's twenty seventeen public engagement framework. The city is committed to engaging residents on matters that affect their quality of life in their city. To facilitate more informed and inclusive municipal decision-making. And to being open, transparent and accountable. To engage and empower residents to participate in meaningful discussions and innovative solutions. With all due respect to my political friends tonight. In just four years, all that virtue signaling verbiage has become clearly toenail varnish at best. As for the supposed difficulty in finding a location. We all know and have faith that where there is a will, the city finds a way. There is a wealth of far safer locations, including Lake Ontario Park. Or the vast acreage surrounding the new Providence Care Hospital. Or the even larger former L ten industrial site. Or Memorial Hall, uh, sorry, I mean the Memorial Center. Perhaps even the expansive municipal airport grounds. My political friends, I beg you, please find a better spot. Or make damn sure you execute this perfectly. For it jeopardizes world-famous revenue generating largely volunteer community organizations. For which and because of which the Olympic Harbor was originally built a life near nearly a lifetime ago. If this project goes sideways, it doesn't just scuff up some vacant lot a bit. It might destroy innovative and uniquely Kingston organizations like Cork and Brigantine. Cork has brought in tens of millions of dollars of international and national visitor money. Uh, and priceless recognition since nineteen sixty-nine. The award-winning Brigantine program ironically, which will now compete for its space on the exact spot where the huts will go. Has been providing well-proven prevention for at-risk youth since the nineteen fifties. Several individuals have told me personally that their time crewing on the Saint Lawrence to truly save them and their children. From jail, addiction and homelessness. You'd think councillors, we'd be investing in preventing the problem, not just slapping Band-Aids on bullet holes. In closing, I would like to request that councillors simply ask yourselves one question. How many of the hundreds of parents who bring their children here each year from around the world? Or indeed, the thousands of sailors themselves will come back here? When the word goes viral as it has done in Kitchener, that they and their children share space with these vulnerable individuals. Regardless of their right to housing. Just one, sorry, right done?
Sorry, just a thirty-second warning?
Okay, thanks. Just one discarded needle could do the trick in this age of uh Karens. This is just my own humble opinion. I do not presume to speak for others who will be affected much more than myself and my family. Unless, of course, the real hidden agenda of this so-secret initiative is to rezone Portsmouth Olympic Harbor. To residential and destroy our lovely historic waterside Olympic Park with multiple high-rise condos. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from council? Okay, seeing none. It's more, thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move to our next delegation. Uh, we will invite Crystal Wilson to speak to again clause one, report number one-one. Winter initiatives to support the homeless community. Ms. Wilson, welcome. And you have the floor.
Good evening. I I am, it's a tough, tough to follow some of those comments. Um, I think I think what's important that we what we remember is that. We're trying to save lives and and I I don't, there's no perfect solution. There's no perfect answer. But we have to try. And so we've heard over and over again, there's no data, there's no evidence to support this kind of model. We agree, and that's why we reached out to Queen's Faculty of Health Sciences. Colleen Davidson's team is going to work with us to create evaluation models. To to use to continue to to move forward with other types of initiatives that we but which might help to end homelessness. Um, we we know. I, I'm struggling today because one of my friends is really sick. And and he has pneumonia and nobody can house him. Nobody can put him in shelter. Nobody can put him, there's nowhere to put him. There's no hotel room for him. He's perfectly behaved. He was on our hotel initiative last year with no problems at all. And for two weeks, he's been fighting pneumonia and I found him today crying in his tent. And I don't know what to tell him. He keeps asking me when I can get him into somewhere safe. And we we would not pursue. It's a lot of risk for us. We would not pursue these kind of initiatives. If we thought we were going to destroy a building or if we thought we were going to destroy boats. We are trying to put the most vulnerable Kingstonians, people who are our citizens. Into somewhere safe to keep them safe through the winter because they will die if we leave them on the streets. We know that the city's relationship with with hotels has has eroded. We know that there's no hotel rooms. Yesterday, I COVID rapid COVID tested somebody who tested positive. I asked for isolation for them and I was told they could have attacked. That's the state of the city we're in right now. I cannot, I, there are thirty-one tents. If you just stand at the back of I C H and count, there are thirty-one tents. That is bigger, that is bigger encampment. Than what we had at Bell Park. We have more people, more people procured in in trying to survive the winter now than we had last year. Last year, we had a count of seventy people on the streets. We know it's much higher than that this year. With COVID, with the current outbreak, it's. I I woke up to a message, somebody had gone behind I C H to to check on their friends and told me that they were paying people. To to snuggle up with them like we used to do with chicken pot parties so that people could get into the trailers that do have some heat. It's not, this is not an ideal situation. We are in a crisis. We're in a housing crisis. We're in a homelessness crisis. We're in an O P A crisis. And we have COVID on top of that. And we have to do something. We have to try. We have to try something different. I know personally, over four hundred people in the city of Kingston do not have homes. So we're asking for ten, we're asking for ten to try. To try with evidence, with science backing us, with science tracking us. We've asked the neighbors to consider adding to our evaluation criteria so that we can make sure. When we, when we, when we decide whether or not this is a successful venture, that the venture, that the the neighbors have had input. And we've asked the neighbors to join our advisory council so that they can see right in our operations. So that they can help us make this initiative successful. I'm a sailor. I know Cork. I volunteered with Cork. I reached out to Cork first. And asked them what we would need to do to make this initiative successful. We've checked their timelines. We know that when we leave April thirtieth, they will be fine. We know, we have no intention of staying in Portsmouth Harbor. It's not an ideal solution for long term. It's it's frustrating to me to hear some of the rumors that um that have flown. Because the communication has been so challenging. We we, it's a hard, you know, cart and horse situation. If if we went and asked first and we didn't have permission from council. Then we're we're getting people, you know, engaged in something that might not happen. So we know that council has to decide first. Before a lot of the engagement can happen, but we're prepared to engage. We're prepared to educate and we're working with people who are trauma responsive educators to and and opening up our trauma responsive courses. To the community, to the neighbors of Portsmouth Harbor so that they can learn with us the science behind behind trauma care. We're, we're, one of our goals is to become the first trauma responsive organization in Kingston. Lots of people are trying. We've engaged with all of the experts to try to make sure that we can help people best. And we want the neighbors to walk with us. So we we responded as soon as we had an invitation to be to to work with neighbors, we were there. We answered their questions. We did our best. We've we've opened communications as much as we can. So so we we hope, we hope that the city, that the city will will step up to help the other three hundred ninety. We're only trying to save ten, um, three hundred ninety people. We hope that you open a warming center. We hope that we find more housing. We felt more attainable housing. Um. And we hope that the neighbors of Portsmouth Olympic Harbor will, you know, consider embracing ten people who need your support. Ten people who need help. Um, they're our neighbors.
Thank you. Um, okay. Are there any questions from council? Uh, yes, that's for.
Thank you and through you, Mister Mayor. Uh, thanks for your presentation with Ms. Wilson. And then we had a lot of conversations this week. Uh, it was a sudden uh announcement for me as well. I I actually had somebody email me. They saw it on Facebook and then staff called me just shortly before the agenda came out. So it was a surprise for me. And uh, and it was a surprise for you. Which means that, and like you said yourself, that there hasn't been very much, uh, there's been very much a lack of communication. Now, a lot of the questions that I'm hearing from neighbors. Is about, is around supportive services. So I wonder if you could share a little bit. Who is involved in this project, who you have on the board and what kind of expertise you have to help this project be actually successful?
Um, so we did, so I would like to remind council that, um, as you are aware, we ran a similar project last year. This isn't exactly new because we're we're running almost the same same care model that we did last year in the motels. So last year, we had ten people in motels. We took care of them. You didn't see any headlines about any problems because there weren't problems. Um, but we, this year, we have way more support. We have more advisors on our team. So Queen's Faculty of Health Sciences, Rosemary Wilson is in our um nurse practitioner. She lives up the street in Portsmouth Village as well. So she's supporting and she's been helping us make connections within the Faculty of Health Sciences. Um, to to mostly to provide care and to provide evaluation criteria. Um, we now have a physician who hasn't been named yet, but there's a physician physician on our board as well, which is pretty exciting for us. Um, and um, we have one of the vocal vocal neighbors from. The Integrated Care Hub has joined our board, Brandon Casford. He's also part of the business community. And we invited him to walk along with us because we want to hear concerns and we want to be, we want our toes held to the five. We're not going to pretend that everything's perfect. So we've asked people who are who have been vocal, um. I I against initiatives to join us so that we can help find better ways forward. Um, grandmother Laurel, who some of you know from the indigenous community, is on our advisory team to make sure that we can, we can honor. Um, i- indigenous culture and indigenous people. Um, Fixahai, um, who some of you may know, um, has joined our board again for evaluation purposes and creating criteria. Um, Roger Romero is from K C H C. Um, he's he's part of our advisory committee, but he he actually was working with us to develop a program to to. To have youth engaged from Pathways to Education, youth engaged in our sponsorship program to help them. When 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 our original plan was to build the houses ourselves, but because we're moving so quickly, a choice was made to buy them instead. But we were working with path with Roger and with pathways to um develop programs to engage youth within our organization. Um, Roger is also helping us and guiding us with trauma-informed care and and helping us to be a trauma-responsive organization. Um, so he'll be offering the training. He's offered it for free, both for our employees and volunteers and our board and the neighbors of Portsmouth Harbor. Um, I'm going to miss people. Letitia Plaid, who you've heard from already, has a background in in healthcare. Um, so what I would say is we. We have been consulting, but we've been consulting the people who need help most. And and we have been reaching out. So Onwana has has told us this is something that might help some of their people. Um, M H S, we spoke with them already and they have said they will continue to operate the way they do while they will go to where people are at. And we think that is the best model that we can, that we can offer people is to meet people where they're at and go to where they're at. Sorry, um. Sure less, sorry. My advisors are going to give me a hard time because I miss somebody.
That's okay. I'll ask a follow-up question. So the report in front of us mentions that that you've been, the staff have asked you. Asked O S L for a um development, uh, to to develop an operational plan. And I believe I would probably address a lot of the questions that we've heard. Um, how close are you to developing and submitting it to the city?
We're um, we're getting there. The the thing that we need is to be able to have a candid discussion with city staff about risk and responsibilities. So that we can appropriately define um who's responsible for what. And that can't happen until after council decides if we're going to move this forward. So it's a cart, again, uh, you know, a chicken and egg, cart and horse problem. Um, we need to sit down with staff. Once you've, once you've approved, if you approve this um, this pilot project. And and clearly define risk and responsibilities. And that's our, that's our next step after tonight.
Thank you.
Next is councillor Wilson.
Thank you, worship, and thank you very much, Ms. Wilson, for describing this project in such detail. Um, I think there was a concern with the fence. Um, possibly giving maximum protection to the boats. Um, you know, if that's um been worked on or is that a question we should ask staff? Uh, when it comes up to the report tonight?
Hmm, I I think that's a question for staff. Um, I I would say that the the people, reminder that the people that we are trying to support. Are ones that you've seen in the news already who, um, they won't be climbing on boats. Um, who who have mobility challenges and and the reason that we're choosing that is because we know they won't survive the cold. We know they won't survive snow on sidewalks, right? Um, so you know, I'm a boat owner and my boat was at Portsmouth Harbor. So I understand their concerns. And we'll do our best to mitigate, but also as a boat owner, I understand it's my responsibility to take care of my boat. And to make sure that there aren't attractive things on it. But um, I think if you talk to staff about, I mean, I think it's smart to just secure the boats more anyway. Because we heard from neighbors that this is already a problem, that there is already a problem with with um access to the boat. So it's something that long term might be more beneficial to boat owners to find a good, secure way to to protect them.
Okay, thank you. And my second question was going to be about, um, which. Um, uh, uh, you know, who would be staying in the sleeping, in the sleeping cabins? Um, an earlier delegate was saying, um, it would just be, you know, whoever from wherever wants. Enter to to pick Portsmouth Olympic Harbor as the site. But saying it would probably be more clients like with mobility issues. So is is that the case then?
Yes, like.
To anyone who volunteers.
So we're not going to force anybody to move. We would never do that. Part of, part of the the way we operate is around, you know, independence and agency and that and choice. Um, and part of the struggle in the system right now is the lack of choice, which is why, you know, providing an alternate option is important. Um, but our our primary, our primary goal is to protect the people who can protect themselves. And so it would be offered first to the people who 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 are struggling with mobility issues. Um, some of you have met in previous delegations, Will. He he's, he's still considering despite being moved to transitional housing. Um, some of you have met in previous delegations, Will. He he's, he's still considering despite being moved to transitional housing. He's frustrated with the lack of independence that he's he's receiving in 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 transitional housing. So he he might be one of the ones considered. And then we have, um, we, we will put in place, um, a gentleman named Bruce, who some of you have met before, um, who actually stays at my house. I trust him enough to live in my house and stay, you know, my child lives here, my adult child lives here. Um, and he he's gonna provide the maintenance and he's gonna provide the nighttime security. And he'll, he'll make sure that people are safe. And he already takes care of people who have mobility challenges. So he, you know, he he knows, he knows a lot of what to do. And he he's also experiencing, you know, despite living on my property, we we would prefer that he find, um, permanent housing. So we're hoping through this program it might help him lead to permanent housing as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Deputy Mayor Westhoff.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Patterson, and thank you, Crystal, again. Um, I I just have a hard time understanding the possibility of success without washrooms in these cabins. I just, it's, it's the coldest spot in the city. And, um, there are people who get sick. We all need washrooms at two in the morning, four in the morning and they, and and the walkover, I I just the dignity of, I mean, of disabled people, mobile, mo- mobility issues, residents with mobility issues. Um, um, have they thought about just building ten cabins in the sale room and keeping people in the warm of the building? You know, I don't know, it's for staff, but I just have such a hard time and my heart is breaking as I'm listening to you. And, um, so, um.
I guess, I, I appreciate the question. I appreciate the question and I appreciate the concern and I wish we could give everybody a bathroom. But the reality is, we share bathrooms all over the city. The Integrated Care Hub has three hundred people that they serve. Before the COVID outbreak, they were serving over three hundred people and they share one shower. But that many people, one of the things we were excited about at Portsmouth Harbor is there's actually enough toilets for everybody. And there's, there's like six showers. There's so much resources, many more resources compared to what our our existing congregant settings have. But when we go to a movie, we share bathrooms. When we go to a hockey game, we share bathrooms. This is, this is not an unusual thing. If you went to a summer camp or or, um, you know, a campground, you're gonna be sharing bathrooms. So if we could have self-contained units, it will take us years to get in place. And if you wanna put the cabins inside the cell room, I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna complain about that. Um, but but I think the reality is this, we're still stepping up and improving from what we have already.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Next is Councilor Neil.
Thank you, Crystal. And this is a question I'll ask you, but I'll also ask it of staff when it comes up. Um, when do you anticipate, uh, if it gets approved tonight? When do you anticipate, uh, it being fully functional? I walked my dog this morning, it was freezing. I'm gonna walk my dog at midnight when this meeting's over and I know I'm gonna have to bundle up.
Yeah, so it's, um, so we, um, it will be a staff question. When we asked off when we could move in, if it was approved tonight, they said they would start working immediately. Um, we do, thankfully, because of the company that we're working with, um, they diverted two cabins to be attached to our, um, initiative if this goes ahead tonight. Um, and then, um, what we've discussed is that if, as they build the cabins, they'll bring them in groups of three. So we should be able to move three in right away. Um, there's a fourth one that can be trucked in. And so we would by the end of the year have, be able to have ten. Um, but we would, the transportation plan is to truck them, is to bring them three at a time.
So, so clearly, it's gonna be critical that we have a warming station uh, for these, these people and more bef- before that.
We're, we're talking about ten people. You've got, you've got hundreds more that need help.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Crystal, for your work on this. The, um, the question I have is and and you kind of almost addressed it a little bit yourself. So we we have, you know, a limited, um, supply of of my, of resources, of money to provide for the, these programs. And I, you want more? I think we all wanna see a lot more. But you al- you also have a program that you mentioned that worked well. Because you're right, we didn't hear a lot of concern expressed about the folks that were being housed in in that motel that that was, was I know there were other issues in different motels. Why would we sort of not, given, you know, the fact that there's certainly seemed to be a lot of unanswered questions yet? Why wouldn't we sort of divert that money into that kind of a program which we know we can run? Um, and get these questions resolved uh, so that we're, you know, we, if if this is a project that we think, you know, that we, we do have all the answers to and that we, we can move forward effectively? Maybe we move forward effectively next winter. In the meantime, we ensure that we have a program that works for these folks beginning almost right away. It, I I'm just not I I just don't wanna see this be be an unsuccessful effort. Uh, and and, you know, when when we could have housed more people, um, using the models that we're already using, but but, you know, en- enhancing that with additional funding and resources.
Hmm, so, sorry, last year, um, if you remember, because of the pandemic, a lot of the hotels weren't taking customers. Um, and so it was easier to get a hotel room. This year, Queens University didn't house, um, four hundred of their first-year residents, so they took up a number of spaces in hotels. The military also, for the first time ever, had, um, people declining postings because it's so difficult to get housing in Kingston. And the military have taken up a number of hotel rooms as well. Hotel prices are at a premium now. They weren't like that last year. So it's a different environment. Um, I I have already reached out to the same hotels we worked with last year and they're not able to work with us this year. Um, but on top of that, people want a place to call home. And with the cabins, they can paint them whatever color they want. They can decorate them whatever color they want. They can put in their own accessories. And they, and and, you know, make it a place where they're really comfortable. We can't do those kind of things in a mo- in a motel room. And, you know, we, we want them to have a place where they can feel so comfortable that they start thinking forward. And, you know, the motels were okay that way last year and then we did have some successes. And then people who were housed out of the motel program last year are still housed. That's a pretty good success. Um, but, um, but but but, you know, giving the people the agency to control their own door and and to to really make a place their own until they can find permanent housing, it'll help lead them to success. We saw last year on a hotel initiative, the people who do use substances use less. We didn't measure it. And this year we have the ability to measure, measure things like that because of the support we have from Queens. We saw people who went from not caring about themselves, not caring about others, to now being on our team as part of a care team. Um, we, the changes that we see, the changes that we saw last year and the changes that we see in people building, helping them build confidence will help them lead to permanent, successful housing. And I think, you know, we, we, we've done a lot of exploration of other cabin communities. And the thing we're bringing differently to this, you know, I'm, I've said a number of times, I'm a mathematician. I believe in data. I've gone to the Auditor General just to try to get more, more data about homelessness into the system. But we, we need to, we need to prove, I'm not, like, I'm not sure we have the proof in the system right now that what we're doing right now is working, especially when we see the number of tens out there. Um, but what we're trying to do is show that if we, if we come from a different approach, a trauma-responsive approach, if we come from a place where, um, you know, we encourage independence as much as possible and give pe- people ways to cook. In a motel, they didn't have a way to cook. In this setup, they will. And then those, those things, practicing what it's like to be in a, in a, in a, an apartment by themselves with it, practicing with us and with the support that we can bring to the, to the, um, initiative, will help people become more, um, more, you know, more successful in permanent housing. That's what we believe and we're willing to be evaluated, to be able to show whether that's true or not.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Hey, uh, next is Councilor Chappelle.
Thank you, worship. Ms. Wilson, uh, again, I having many conversations with you. I I do appreciate all the effort that you put forward in in this initiative. It's certainly very vulnerable in our community. I, I like the concept of of housing, um, though those are vulnerable. Is there any assurances that the candidates that you select for this housing um, initiative would would be, um, those that are vulnerable but also are not dependent on substances? Because that seems to be one of the bigger concerns that I've read in many of the letters is the potential of, of of drug use in that site at Portsmouth Harbor.
Hmm, so I I guess one of the things that we learned from the neighbors, some of the neighbors of Portsmouth Harbor is that they already have concerns with, um, people parking at Portsmouth Harbor and dealing drugs there. So it's already a concern in the neighborhood. And what you heard from, um, Dr. Perky was that they already have, um, you know, have have found needles in the area. But what we would do, like, we, when we ran the motel initiative last year, we made it clear. We're not, we're not there to, you know, be harm reduction workers. We're there to be care coordinators. So if somebody, everybody was told, if you overdose in the hotel room, you will die. Nobody died. Um, we, we would work with harms and work with street health and choose candidates who are, you know, if if they do are are substance users, that they know how to use safely. It's not a place that we wanna put people who would be unsafe, um, you know, potentially in a building by themselves. That that wouldn't set anybody up for success. So working with partners and making sure people are are selected carefully um, and and have the right supports in place is what's important.
Okay, so that that doesn't really allay much my concerns because what I was really hopeful to hear was that you were looking for people who are uh, without housing, but maybe have mental challenges or need supportive care, but are not in an addictive state. Because there's a lot of social issues that come with that to make that more of a complex location. And so with that in mind, was it a possibility to perhaps, you know, take the ice out of Center Seventy and put these units into Center Seventy? There's, there's washrooms that have been abused by every teenage boy playing hockey, and girl, of course. I I mean, there's just all these facilities that would be contained in one location. So if it's truly about housing and then you have a location where you can bring service workers to, they're not trying to migrate if they're not in addictive state to the downtown core. You can have programs on the other ice surface or community efforts. You know, maybe they can do crafts that, uh, will help generate some income or get them into, you know, all kinds of things that you could have in a localized area. Uh, was that even proposed? Because I just think there's such.
So I guess, um, you'll have to ask staff what was considered and which other sites were, um, were evaluated for the I think they were looking for the the most facilities already available so that there would be as little as possible put into infrastructure changes. Um, I, I mean, I understand from stuff, even Mayor Patterson was looking for locations for us. I think, right? Yeah, um, so I think everybody was trying to find the best fit. Um, but in terms of substances, the, one of the things that frustrates me a lot is to hear, um, you know, homelessness and substance use in in this, many house people who use substances as well. And we need to keep in mind, if we keep, if we keep stigmatizing people, we will never get to places of wellness for them. So we need, you know, we need to support and we need to find ways to help them. But, you know, continuing to stigmatize them is is not gonna get them to a place of wellness.
Thank you. Next on my list is Councilor Kylie.
Mayor Patterson, through you. Hello, Ms. Wilson. Um, it's exciting to see that we're at a decision point on this now. So thanks for your hard work in getting us here and the staff who've helped you along the way. I just have a question about timing. I wanna circle back to something that I think I heard you say. But I'd like you to clarify, and that is, not all the cabins are coming at once. So it won't be until the end of the year that the ten would be here. Is is that accurate?
Hmm, so the the transportation model that we, um, discussed with the manufacturers that they could transport three at a time because that's what fits on a flatbed. I know for sure, I know they're watching tonight. Put words in their mouth. But, um, I I know for sure that two are ready and it takes them less than a week to make the other one. Um, so we should be able to have, as soon as staff say that the site is ready, we should be able to have three in place. Um, and by the, they've committed, the manufacturer's committed that by the end of the year, for sure, we'll have all ten. So it would just be three arriving at a time as they're ready.
The reason I ask, and it will relate to my second question, is about timing concerning the potential for additional community consultation. I had asked the previous delegation, Dr. Perky and Mr. McCann, about maybe a week or two delay to get more feedback from the surrounding neighborhood. Do you have any thoughts on that in terms of getting the buildings here? And if it would impact the program if we wait, uh, maybe a fortnight?
I guess, is is the question really, um, you know, is it just about community engagement? Or is it about community decision-making? Because in terms of community engagement, that's what we want. We want the community to support. So I have already reached out to the, to, um, through, um, Ms. Liz Shell um, to see if the Domino Theater might be available to show a film called Resilience, which the Community Foundation pro- promotes quite extensively. Um, to help understand the science be time, behind trauma-responsive care so that the neighbors can understand what we're trying to get to. Um, you know, if we have a place, we could do that right away. We could do the training right, Roger's ready to to provide training to the neighbors and in the teams and the other people in our advisory council right away. So we could do those kind of things before the cabins even come in place. So if it's about education and engagement, we can take those pieces forward. If you, if you're really talking about, like, education, uh, engagement towards decision-making, then that, that will just delay and leave people in the hole.
Okay, thank you so much.
For any other questions for the delegation? Okay, Ms. Wilson, thank you very much.
Thank you.
With that, we'll move to our ninth and final delegation. We will invite Ivan Stoichkovich to speak to clause one or report number one oh one, uh, again regarding winter initiatives supporting the homeless community. Uh, Mr. Stoichkovich, welcome, and you have.
I am an elected, uh, general secretary of the Caracu Union of Tenants. City of Berlin in Germany just made a decision to socialize the property of its largest landlords. They didn't like the fact that real estate prices and rental prices were skyrocketing. Uh, it can be done, it is being done, and we should do it too. Um, if you're interested in learning more about that, you're welcome to reach out to me and I'll point you to relevant. And I'm here to speak to the report, COU twenty-one two seventy-nine called Winter Initiatives Supporting the Homeless Community. The report is appropriately named because it is indeed not meant to house the homeless, but to support them in being homeless. The fact that the cutest word in the English dictionary, "community," thrown in makes no difference. In fact, it makes this tragedy all the more tragic. Indeed, there is a homeless community here in Kingston, and indeed it has been created by the policies of this government. And indeed, it is being supported by this council, which uses every opportunity it has to normalize and entrench its existence. Just in tonight's session, the staff is proposing nine hundred thousand dollars for this, for supporting the homeless and at least three point five million for the developers. And that's just in the report that I identified, I read, as being likely to be containing money for the developers. There's probably a lot more. One point three million designated for services for the homeless is being set up in this report as either for all three of the warming center, ten Shacks and and, uh, Integrated Care Hub, or for putting people in motels for the winter. Why? This is a blackmail of sorts. Purpose is to pit service providers against each other or to get them to give up on the idea of actually housing people. To accept that as homelessness is a fact of life and to make people like me, who will tell you that you need to put people up in hotels and motels responsible for Crystal's Shacks or the Warming Center not happening, or ICH having to close down. This is a fall choice and you need to reject it. There, there is money for all these things. More importantly, there is money and power to provide real, social, public rent, get-to-income housing. It just needs to not continue to be given to the wealthiest of the Kingston's landlords and developers. The report says that only our livable solutions is interested in tiny homes. Could it be that, could that be because all other providers are interested in actual housing that is not on the table? Why are Shacks even under consideration? Why are we making deals with an un-elected and unaccountable to any one individual who, with a proven record of being a bad landlord and no significant experience or any qualifications whatsoever for working with vulnerable people? Since there is a clear commitment to providing absolutely no housing for the most vulnerable and to continuation of homelessness throughout the winter, why is the bylaw, which calls for clearing of encampments remaining in place? Why is the bylaw, which will certainly cause that's an enormous suffering as it prevents people from setting up their own semi-permanent trucks and tents, which can be warmed if left alone, not being suspended or struck down? Here's what needs to be done. Number one, the genocidal encampment protocol needs to be repealed, and people need to be not only left alone to build their own socks and campments, but supported in doing so. It should not be poor tenants organized through a tenant union that are feeding and clothing and heating and housing the homeless, nor should it be on harm reduction workers to cook and house people. It should be the city that does that. The report talks about people, housing people who don't want to hang around the hub because they're trying to stay away from drugs in the shacks. By dividing people into drug users and those who don't want to use and reducing the need of the farmer group to safe consumption services is cynical and perpetuates the narrative that people are defined by their addiction. People don't only need a place to use drugs safely, they need services. Indeed, they need safe and free supply of medicine, but they also need food, clothing, housing, entertainment, recreation, therapy, et cetera. We are providing these services. We shouldn't have to. Number three, Kingston's officially 200, but in reality, 400 plus homeless need to be housed in motels. They need to be expropriated with some of the millions that are weekly going to obscenely wealthy developers and landlords and who are using them to create housing for the wealthy and to inflate rental and real estate prices. Needs of those who lives are in danger, who are sick and dying, and who are at the threat of freezing to death, need to be put before the needs of the landlords, developers, and hotel owners. The staff who contradicted themselves by claiming in the last session that no, no, no motel is available. And now offering, number four, we need to. We keep hearing about how it takes time to build a real housing. You need to begin. You keep saying this year after year. The expropriate the landlords. Winter has started, and it is way too late to be satisfied with building 10 shots. There are 400 lives threatened with extinction. We need 400 rooms with heat and locks on them, and it is not about hard to provide them. Just do it.
Thank you very much, sir. Are there any questions for the delegation? Okay, seen none. Thank you very much. So we will now move on in our agenda. We have no further delegations. We have no briefings. Are there any additions to present? Okay, seeing now, we do have one motion of congratulations. Moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Deputy Mayor Osterhoff, that the sincere congratulations of Kingston City Council will be extended to local physician Dr. Elaine Ma, who is a 2021 recipient of the Award of Excellence presented by the Ontario College of Family Physicians. But Ma is recognized for her leadership and her role in the region's COVID-19 response. Her efforts and innovative strategies are credited with helping keep case numbers low and testing and vaccination rates high. But Ma sits on the Kingston Task Force for Physician Recruitment and has been a valuable partner as the city works on this important job. Congratulations, Dr. Ma, on this well-deserved work. We call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, we have no deferred motions. It is 9:13, so I will propose we take a 10-minute break, and then we will reconvene at 9:23 and begin into reports. We'll see you in 10 minutes. Okay, folks, it's 9:23, so we will reconvene. I need just councillors to put their cameras back on, so I know that we're all back. Okay, looks like we at least have a forum, so we will continue. So before we do, I will circle back, because I do believe that there is petition to present. Councillor Chappelle, you have the floor.
Thank you, Your Worship, Mr. Patterson. What I have is a petition of 16 original signatures that have been submitted to the clerk for processing. But really, the impact of this is an additional 419 online signatures, but not conformed to the bylaw for submitting petitions. So I'm glad that I'm able to present this with at least 16 plus the 419 in theory. So this petition is presented by one of my constituents, Jenna Martin, who is a 12-year-old skateboarder. I mentioned it at our last meeting, but I didn't have any original signatures. And I think it's only with the significance of her effort, I think it's important and imperative as her representative to present this petition on behalf of her and the youth of Kingston. And that is that as a local resident, she is seeking support for a skate park to be built in the west end of Kingston. She understands, and she's gone through and read our plans and noted that it's many years out, that there is a potential for a skate park to be built. But she's hoping that with well over 400 signatures and that we could actually exploit this a little sooner. You know, she loves skateboarding. She can free her mind, escape from every bit of the troubles of school and what have you. And it feels like she's flying. And, and, you know, she knows that she put some effort into this. And she knows where all the skate parks are in Kingston, but none of them are in the west end. And she can only get there because she's 12 by asking her parents for rides. And although they're supportive, it would be nice if she had a park that was closer, that she could ride her board over or bike over without having to bother her parents. So she's, would really like to see one of these built. I'm presenting this, and I'll be also presenting this to the Parks and Recreation Staff to hopefully consider this as we move forward. It's, it's, skate parks are easy to maintain once built. They're a safe place for kids to play and stay out of trouble, will also be healthy and active. And they're becoming a thriving for family get-togethers as well. There's a unique bond of skateboards and, you know, all social economic backgrounds are able to participate. And of course, you know, having, having this young, young Jenna Martin participate in the democratic process of reporting petition to city council, I think needs to be applauded by all of us as councillors. She's probably an aspiring young leader in the future, and I'd like to thank her for bringing this forward to my attention.
Thank you very much. So now we'll move on to reports. First, we have report number 99 from the CAO.
Moved by councillor Chappelle, seconded by councillor Doherty, that report 99 from the chief administrative officer, consent be received and adopted.
We just the two clauses. Would anyone like to deal with those clauses separately? Okay, seeing none, we'll vote on them together. So clause one is a word of contract 500 O'Connor condenser on denser insulation, sorry. Moving my. In here. And then number two, word of contract flooring replacement at the Kingston Grand Theatre. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's. Okay, on to report number 100 from the.
Moved by councillor Hill, seconded by councillor Holland. That report number 100 from the chief administrative officer recommend be received and adopted clause by clause.
Okay, clause one, transfer of part three and part nine prosecutions under the Provincial Offences Act to the Sea of Kingston. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Number two, 2022 annual amendment to fees and charges by law 2005-10. Councillor Chappelle.
Yes, I'd like to propose that the fee by law not include $300 for heritage properties. I think it's, it was debated at a number of meetings, and it seems to have crept back into this fees by law. And I would pose that it be removed from this presentation.
Okay, so councillor Chappelle, do you have a, an amendment then?
You know what, there's so much, my amendment would just be simply remove that. I guess I could type one up, but I didn't. There's so much in today's docket that I.
So councillor Chappelle, I believe that somebody else actually has that amendment, so.
Oh, well, then if that's the case, then we got great, great councillors thinking alike.
So we'll just move on then at that point. So next on my list is councillor Kylie.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Just really quickly, I wanted to thank staff for putting a freeze on increases to fields and other sports facilities as they're doing a review of those very fees. So it's great that it won't be going up this year, and thank you, staff.
Okay, thank you. Next is councillor Ossana.
Thank you, Your Worship. Yes, so how councillor Chappelle was just requesting an amendment about heritage, heritage permit fees like being waived. Councillor Stroud after me, I think, is going to be moving that. But I have another amendment to move, and that's with regarding Portsmouth Olympic Harbor Marina fees. I heard from staff that as far as Confederation Basin and renting out, you know, for the season and for monthly, for the season and for monthly, it looks like next season or next year, twenty-twenty-two, might be a good year. We'll have lots of boats in there. But some of us, well, I think all of us on council, received an email on October twenty-sixth citing concerns about what's been happening at Portsmouth Olympic Harbour, less and less boats. Because in historically, over the, you know, last year, we've been increasing the fees, you know, two-point-five percent higher than inflation. We've been increasing the fees according to our property tax rates instead of add inflation, which has started to make a difference. And people have been pulling out of Portsmouth Olympic Harbour, going to private marinas, which are actually cheaper. And so with this, my amendment, the clerks have it. It's moved by myself and seconded by councillor Stroud. And it's just for the seasonal rates and the monthly rates at Portsmouth Olympic Harbour to leave them the same as this year, twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, thank you. So can we just get that up on the screen, please?
Do you want me to read it?
Councillor Ossanik, if you want to, if you want to read it, the clerks are working on getting it up on the screen, but.
Yeah, no problem. No, it can be tricky. That City of Kingston by law two thousand and five dash ten fees and charges, schedule A, be amended so that the seasonal and monthly marina fees for Portsmouth Olympic Harbour is kept at the two thousand twenty-one rate. So essentially, we're freezing it for next year.
So I, hopefully, that's self-explanatory. So whenever, whenever we are able to put it up on the screen, okay, if you just do that, see it. Okay, so there it is. Councillor Ossanik has already read it and I think already spoken to it. Unless there's anything else you wanted to say, councillor Ossanik?
Um, just that Portsmouth Olympic Harbour, it is, we only have two marinas. And Portsmouth Olympic Harbour is, is famous, right? We got Cork every year. We have, it had nineteen-seventy-six Olympics. And it's to all of our benefit in the city to keep boats there. And I think freezing the fees will help keep boats there, bring boats back instead of just going to the private marinas. Nothing against the private marinas, but all of us taxpayers, you know, put a lot of our tax dollars into Portsmouth Olympic Harbour, so we want the site to be maximized.
Thank you. So is there anybody that wishes to speak to the amendment only? Councillor Doherty?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to excuse myself from this boat because we actually docked a boat there. So I'm just, just love off for a second.
Okay, is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the amendment? Councillor Neil?
Thank you. Sorry, I was caught with a grape in my mouth. Quick, quick question for staff. Have we costed this out? How much would, would maintaining it at this rate end up costing the city?
Ms. Turner?
Through you, your worship. I thank you, councillor Neil, for the question. Excellent, excellent question. We just ran the numbers quickly on the budget, and we'd be looking at probably less than twenty thousand dollars. I would add, though, that we do have twenty-five new seasonals for twenty-twenty-two at Portsmouth Olympic Harbour. And also the fact that we will be able to be back to a hundred percent capacity at both marinas. So that will help to offset some of the costs if council wishes to go with a zero percent increase on the fees.
Okay, um, I appreciate that. And I know it may, considering the size of our overall budget, it may seem like nickel and dimes. But, you know, back in the nineties, we had a great debate about, about the fees we charge. I got myself in trouble then for saying nobody ever lost a vote by upsetting the yachting class. And for that reason, I mean, people can afford very, very expensive boats. They visit us, and with late COVID and post-COVID, we're going to have full marinas again. I think we should charge a reasonable rate as, as originally proposed, so. Thank you.
Next is councillor Hutchison.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to the councillor who asked the question, Ms. Turner, because I was pretty sure I read something about recently published from her about how the marinas were filling up again. And I would say that the signing of capacity at a certain rate is usually a sign that you've satisfied the market. And for that, that's one reason for not supporting this amendment, that you are in line with what the market will bear. I'm not always a believer that everybody can afford that, but it certainly stands in bear in mind. The other aspect is that we have. Well, I think that's basically it, that it would appear that we're charging the right amount. Oh, and the other aspect is this. So twenty thousand dollars doesn't sound like very much, but you have to remember when you give up the two percent, the twenty thousand dollars, next year, insofar as these fees are correct, related to cost, you're looking at forty thousand. But we're not going to want to do that, are we? So better to creep up at the inflationary rate as it applies to this particular service and, and, and not take it away this year. Because you're going to have, it is related to costs, including capital costs after you've spent on these permits. So I'd rather not cough it up or have to have another council cough it up in a few years. So I won't vote for the amendment for those reasons. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next is councillor Stroud.
Well, I disagree with the two previous speakers. I think they lack understanding on voting matters. And I think that to generalize it as the yachting class really illustrates that lack of understanding. You know, I, I can't afford to own a home in Sidney district, and I'm a boater, councillor Neil. Does that make me a member of the yachting class? And if I can't afford to moor a boat, which I can't afford to buy at the moment, but if I ever do get a modest boat like councillor Doherty has, I'd like to put it at Portsmouth Olympic Harbour and not be gouged to above what private marinas are, are charging. So that's the important point that you guys just totally missed. The private marinas are undercutting our rates and stealing our business, which is a strange position to be in because usually in voting, the municipal docks are, are often the cheapest because they can afford to, you know, by economies of scale, to have lower rates and therefore keep the facilities running by having a high volume. The capacity, whether we're at capacity or not, and what we're projected to do, it will be affected by the rates. And seeing as this amount of money is quite insignificant in the larger budgetary context, you know, we're going to be voting on another matter tonight, which is several hundred thousand dollars of new spending. And we're talking here about a twenty thousand dollar operational fee recovery, which is essentially, you know, a surcharge to a certain section of visitor to Kingston, which is money that comes into Kingston from elsewhere. So I think to nickel and dime it is a horrible approach, and I fully support the amendment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the amendment? Okay, councillor Ossanik, you have the last word. If there's anything you want to add?
Sure. So according to the information I have, there's two hundred and sixty slips at Portsmouth Olympic Harbour, and in twenty-twenty-one, under a hundred of them were occupied. So that's where I was going on at this. I think it would be much better to be at max occupation, especially it would just look better when Cork is here, if all the boat slips are, you know, fully utilized. Instead of like, what's going on at Portsmouth Olympic Harbour? Is it in decline? What's going on? As well, I know that the application deadline is February. To get a boat slip for next year, you have to put down a four hundred dollar deposit. So we'll see what happens next year then, regardless of this amendment or not. I hope it goes back up to capacity, but I think that we did hear at budget last year or at some point that a report was going to be coming to Arts Recreation Community Policy Committee. So I just wanted to use the last two seconds just to ask staff if there is any marina report coming to council at any time.
Ms. Turner?
Through you, your worship. Councillor Ossanik, we will definitely be back to the Arts Recreation and Community Policies Committee in twenty-twenty-two with an information report on the status of both the, of both Portsmouth Olympic Harbour and Confederation Basin Marina.
Thank you. Thank you, your worship.
Okay, thank you. So we will call the vote then on the motion to amend. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, and that loses in the minority are councillor Kylie, Chappelle, Stroud and Ossanik. Councillor Ossanik, you still have the floor. If there's anything else that you want to say to the.
No, I'll let councillor Stroud do the next amendment.
That's perfect. He is next on my list. Councillor Stroud, you have the floor.
Thank you, your worship. I have a similar amendment for the heritage fee. This, first I'll give the context so that council is aware. I've chaired heritage in the past, and I have a fairly good understanding of, of the issue. And it's, there's nuance to it, but it's, it's easy to explain. If you haven't been, been on heritage and you haven't really been following it, you may not get it from reading the report. So, um, so we never did charge heritage fees before. And now there's, there's been a recent addition of some fees across the board in, in, in planning to recover some of the costs, you know, some of the administrative costs that go into processing applications. So heritage fees meant to do that, and there was, that was explained in a previous report. The problem is that what we really need to do is designate more properties, the, the properties that need designation, right? So the, the rare examples of, of, you know, eighteen-forties architecture that there's only a few left in the city, and they don't exist anywhere else because they've all been demolished. And, you know, like the bakery that we saw on Princess Street, that kind of thing, or, or, or ones that are even more, more valuable than that need, still need to be designated. And, and what staff is finding is there, there's, there's quite a bit of reluctance to do so because, from the landowners, because they're fearful of the heritage process. So this, this thirty-three hundred dollar fee is actually new. So it's, it's a new fee on top of the extra expense that a heritage landowner has to incur when they make any repairs. So to retain the features of these unique buildings, it, it takes, it, it's, it's more expensive to repair and maintain these buildings. So on top of that, we, we charge administrative fee for cost recovery. Well, what does that three hundred dollars get us compared to what it, how it acts as a disincentive is really the issue? The three hundred dollars towards cost recovery is, is, if you talk about nickel and dime, that, that is literally pennies compared to the larger heritage preservation issues such as preserving whole buildings. And, and what it, but, but it damages the heritage buy-in from the community. The buy-in from the community, they, that's what they see first, is that three hundred dollar new heritage fee. And, and that's a turnoff. And so people don't want to buy heritage homes, so heritage homes go down in value. And that more get demolished, and less get designated, et cetera, et cetera. It's a vicious circle. This guy, there are people in the Heritage Committee, Heritage advocates, could explain it much better than me. But basically, this three hundred dollars, it doesn't recover very much cost, and it really is a detriment to the heritage preservation movement in the city. And why is that important? I think we all agree that Kingston is unique in Ontario in, in the amount of heritage buildings per capita. The only other city that's sort of similar would be Ottawa with all those capital buildings, you know, those big capital institutional buildings that everyone, the tourists all flock to see. Well, they, they come to Kingston too. And for, you know, some of these smaller houses in the, in the downtown neighborhoods. And, and I really think we're jeopardizing that with this fee. I wasn't going to say anything about it tonight, but I've been written, I've received several letters correspondence. You as well will have received some of them from the Fronak Heritage Foundation, for example. It's just simply staying that the heritage fee is, is a bad move. And I, I, I would like to ask a question to, to Dr. Campbell about the, about the future of the heritage structure. And if maybe this is something that will be addressed by those in, in the heritage field for the city. So if Dr. Campbell is here, can she speak to what might be coming up about the fee structure in the future that's related to the last report we saw, that had a varying fee structure?
Ms. Campbell?
Thank you, and through you. So I guess I'll start with council did receive an information report. It came up through Heritage Kingston just a short while back proposing or considering what an implementation of a, of a staggered fee structure could look like across fee categories. At that time, council expressed interest in having some more community consultation and discussion, both with, you know, applicants, property owners and other members of the Kingston community on that. As a result, that's why the, the fees and charges, there was a hold essentially placed on the fee schedule to reflect what the fee that was implemented first in twenty-twenty, excuse me, was implemented in twenty-twenty and then executed in twenty-twenty-one. So in this moment, we have the three hundred dollar fee that was then, you know, has been used over the course of the last year. I think one of the, the points, if, if I'm, please councillor Stroud, help me if I'm not heading to the, to the question here. But we have been working with the Heritage Kingston Review Working Group. Council formed that working group to look at the processes and procedures of Heritage Kingston. And one of the considerations and, that we have been looking at does consider kind of how to move heritage applications permit processes through, through the process effectively to get the best protection that we can for heritage properties and supportive processes for homeowners. And I would add to that, that consideration of a fee schedule with the recommendations of, that will come forward through that working group, I think would also be helpful in the future, regardless of the three hundred dollar fee or not, to help us better understand a nuanced fee structure based on some of the feedback we've received to date from both Heritage Kingston, as well as members of council and heritage groups within the community.
Councillor Stroud, I'm just going to note that you have about thirty seconds left on the clock. So if you were going to put forward a motion to amend, I would just advise you do that.
Yeah, yeah. So just in anticipation of this renewed structure that may actually do away with heritage fees in some instances, I, I think we should maybe just remove it from the fee schedule until that work is done. So that's my amendment. I've already sent it to the clerks, so they can get it up. I could read it out while we wait, that the fee schedule be amended.
So, so councillor Stroud, I'm actually going to stop your clock because you're out of time. So I will read it, and then I will give you the floor. So a motion to amend moved by councillor Stroud, seconded by councillor Ossanik. The report one hundred of clause two, received from the CAO, be amended and scheduled to delete three hundred dollar fee for a heritage permit. Okay, councillor Stroud, it's your amendment. You can speak to it if there's anything else you want to say.
Well, just what does the amendment do? The amendment removes the fee temporarily until. Well, just what does the amendment do? The amendment removes the fee temporarily until the review from the Heritage Review Working Group is complete. Staff will have, will bring us another report. And let me just tell you, for context of the amendment, that this is not unprecedented. Ottawa also introduced heritage fees recently, but they waive it for minor alterations that preserve the heritage attributes. But they don't waive it in a situation where you might want to say added dormer or porch to a building, like expand a building that would actually change and detract from its heritage attributes. So then the fee is not waived. The exact wording, you'd have to look at the Ottawa bylaw, but that's the kind of nuance Dr. Campbell was just talking about. So in the future, we're probably not going to be charging fees for minor alterations that preserve heritage if we pass the recommendation that eventually may come if it's somewhere in Ottawa's. Therefore, I think we ought not to be charging fees in the meantime. The amount of money we'll, we'll collect in the interim is negligible. And by removing it, it will send a message to those in the heritage that own heritage properties that we do value all the hard work that they put into these properties. And I'm hoping for your support. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So now we will, I will ask anybody that wants to speak to the amendment only, please. So first on my list is Councilor Doherty.
Thank you, and through you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I'm happy to support this amendment. And thank you to my fellow councillors for moving this forward. We've actually had this discussion in council several times, and I raised the same or similar points that you just raised, Councilor Stroud. My concern is that $300 for minor repairs will actually discourage people from looking after their properties. And that's the last thing that we want to achieve. So happy to support it. Thanks.
Your next is Deputy Mayor Ostroff.
Well, I appreciate the amendment, but I don't think I can support it. Just like we've, I don't know exactly of how it's applied. I know we heard that tonight, but I'm glad that whatever happens, we're going to review it at Heritage Kingston. I'm proud to serve on Heritage Kingston and very passionate about my position there. But I do think that we need to do cost recovery. And I think that the statement we make tonight will say that that's important. And I live in a regulated world, and you have to take permits out. You had, and I think that people realize that when they own these beautiful buildings, that they're proud to own them. People are proud to own boats, and they pay for their slips where they park them. And I think that homeowners and heritage homeowners recognize that. And I don't think it should be a free ride. I think that I, I don't see the evidence that we are compromising or losing heritage value. I don't, I don't think so. Certainly in the time that I've served on Heritage Kingston, I have not sensed that. And I'm really impressed with the homeowners and the people who are committed to it. And I think, I think that everyone else has to pay in the city for services. So should that area as well. Thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the amendment? Next is Councilor Neal.
Thank you. And I totally support the amendment. The points that have been made, Councilor Doherty is absolutely right. I think the $300 would be a disincentive. And some people will start to do things, even though their homes or properties have been designated, they may forego the $300 fee and do minor things that will accumulate over time. Sometimes I end up feeling like Father Time when I talk here. But, but Kingston is a heritage town. People don't come to look at high rises. They come to look at our heritage properties. And the reality is that, that we were the first community to have a heritage bylaw. And the province, when they brought out their Heritage Act, it was modeled on the Kingston, on the Kingston bylaw. So I think it's really, really important that we recognize that heritage and that we support that heritage. And I think that will be much easier to do without a $300 fee being added every time somebody wants to do a minor repair. So I think this is a sensible amendment. It gives staff and the Heritage Committee an opportunity to review and, and come back next year. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Next is Councilor Kylie.
Thanks, Mayor Patterson. Through you. I was hoping I could ask staff a question. Ms. Campbell, would this adversely impact the review at all? Like, does it change the baseline of what you'll be consulting about? Or is there any consideration that this amendment would impact the review?
Thank you, and through you. The Heritage Kingston Review Working Group is established to review the procedures and processes of Heritage Kingston. It wasn't specifically formed in response to a review of the fee structure. What I was trying to flag earlier is that the recommendations that could be forthcoming in 2022 from that working group could have implications on how the processes of Heritage Kingston function, which could then correlate to a more nuanced or appropriately scaled fee structure. So, you know, the decision tonight does not have an impact on the direction of that work, because the work is largely on the process, and the application of fees to the process would be a secondary consideration after that work's completed. I would note that it would result in approximately a 1.6% projected budget growth to the Heritage Services Department into 2022, because there would be a loss of revenue as part of that cost recovery.
Alrighty, thanks.
Okay, is there anybody else that wishes to speak to the amendment? Councilor Stroud, you have the last word. If there's anything you wanted to add? No? So we will call the vote on the amendment. All those in favor? Opposed? And that carries by a vote of nine to three. Patterson, Ostroff, and McLaren opposed. Okay, so we are now back to the annual amendment to fees and charges as amended. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Okay, we will call the vote then on clause two as amended. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Okay, on to clause number three, 2021 Third Quarter Operating Budget and Capital Project Status Report. Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Oh, I'm sorry, Councilor Chappell is opposed. Thank you. Clause number four, request for temporary noise exemption, Peter Candlish. Councilor Neal.
Just a quick question of staff, if I might. Is, was there a circulation done within that, within earshot of this request? If staff could respond to that.
Thank you, Councilor Neal. And through you, Mayor Patterson. Yes, the circulation was done both on our website and in the Kingston League standard.
But not a door-to-door? Yeah.
It was not door-to-door. It's not part of the process or regular?
I, now, this is for a June celebration. And I really wish that the district councillor was here tonight, because I'm sure he would have sounded out, oh, I see, Councilor Oosterhoff, perhaps he's the district councillor. Did I get that wrong? I apologize.
Yeah, I'm the councillor. No problem with this.
Pardon me? Have you?
No, I have not heard from this, I have not heard from this constituent, but...
Okay, I'm, I'm wondering if a deferral would be preferable, since this isn't something that is happening until June? Perhaps if I could ask Councilor Oosterhoff a quick question, how isolated or separate from other buildings would this, would this property be? I apologize that I didn't go out to take a look.
So this is a fairly remote rural property, and I don't know it well, but I know I have not heard any complaints. And it's a close community. And I, I think it's a reasonable request, and I don't, I don't think we need to tamper with it.
I will, I will defer to the district councillor in that case. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Okay, we will call the vote then on clause four. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Clause five, initiation of brownfield tax increment financing payments for 333 University Avenue. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Number six, amendments to the brownfield site agreement for 700 Gardener's Road. All those in favor? Opposed? And that's carried. Number seven, update on current and potential future employment lands. Councilor McLaren.
Thank you. So generally, I approve of this, except for the one thing that they talk about, the possibility of expanding the urban boundary. And I would actually like to, at some point, I'm going to vote against this for the simple reason that I would like to remove that. I have a fellow councillor who's going to move a motion if it gets voted down to read through everything that's requested here, except the possibility of expanding the urban boundary. And part of the reason that I see this is that we are looking for economic development, yes, and they need land, but they also need labor, and labor needs housing. We heard earlier that Queens is housing a lot of their students in hotels. We heard earlier also that the Canadian Armed Forces is housing some people in their hotels, and that some people have rejected postings here because they can't find housing. So it strikes me that as long as there's a housing crisis for everybody, not just the most vulnerable, we have a limiter here of what economic development can do. And the limiter is that companies and businesses that can't find labor to do what they're supposed to do tend not to be successful. And companies that do their due diligence and find that they may not be able to house their workers here may not end up coming here despite the fact that the land is available. So I would like to allow for all that kind of stuff and improve economic development. But without a housing, with a housing crisis that we have, the upside to everything that we're hearing right now is probably a lot more limited than we think. It's important that we solve the housing crisis for at least make a lot more available. So I would like not to limit the, no, sorry, to limit the expansion of the urban boundary. And that is why I'm going to vote against this in the hopes that we can move a motion that does not include that, but everything else.
Thank you. Next is Councilor Chappell.
Thank you, your worship. I guess my question is really to staff on this particular issue. It relates to what Councilor McLaren is speaking to, expansion of the urban, urban boundary. And I'm wondering if that would envision bringing water to our rural communities like Glen Burnie, or having, or even to McAdoo Lane, which is hotly contested. And if there's any insight as to what that would mean if we expanded their boundary, or are we just looking for the property of butted on Highway 15 on that property moving northward towards 401?
So, Councilor Chappell, just the staff item that's in front of us only refers to a potential boundary adjustment, adjustment to the city lands north of the St. Lawrence Business Park. So, so there's nothing else in there unless there's, is there anything else that staff wanted to add or clarify? I'm just sort of reading what's in front of us. Can we just pick a boss?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the question, Councilor Chappell. Yes, I agree with the mayor that the report is not about rural development. It's not about bringing services to the rural district or north of 401. The only urban boundary that is suggested to be looked at as part of the work over the next year would be the potential for the lands that the city already owns immediately adjacent and north to the St. Lawrence Business Park. That, that is all, Councilor Chappell said. That is correct.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor, would you take the chair?
I will, Mayor Patterson, and I recognize.
Thank you. So I'm going to encourage council to support this. I think first of all, having more evidence and data is always good for making important decisions. And so I think it's very clear that the direction that's in front of us is to simply do the work and the review and the, and the analysis that's needed in order to make an informed decision one way or the other. So I think it would be unfortunate to, to make that decision without that information and data that we have in front of us. And the second thing that I would simply say is, you know, we heard earlier this evening from Kingston Economic Development representatives that the pipeline right now for interest in new business coming to Kingston is unprecedented. And we are quickly running out of land. Last week, I met with representatives of a major North American manufacturing firm. They want to bring good paying jobs, manufacturing jobs to our community. These are good career opportunities, exactly the kind of great paying jobs, diversifying our career opportunities. This is exactly the sort of thing that we are looking to attract our community. You know the big issue? They can't, they can't find a spot to locate here in Kingston. And so this potential land that we may be looking at is perhaps the only possibility for them to be able to locate here. So we're not talking about hypotheticals. We're not talking about, well, maybe just having some extra land just in case. We're talking about real opportunities. Real businesses bring real jobs to our community. And I for one can't see no for that. And yes, we do need to build more housing, absolutely. But I'm not prepared to be able to, to vote against opportunities that would bring more jobs and investment and career opportunities with this idea that we're full. I don't want to turn that away from our community. I, I see too many people, young people in our community, they're growing up that want to stay here and find great career opportunities. And this is an important step to be able to help people do that. So for that reason, I think again, regardless of your, your feelings on the, on the boundary expansion, at least, at the very least, I'd ask council to at least support getting the information and the data to make an informed decision. I think it's also important to send an important signal that, that attracting good jobs and investment to the communities. So I'll ask a council to support. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. And I return to chair.
Thank you. Next on my list is Councilor Hill.
Thank you, your worship. And I absolutely agree with what Mayor Patterson has said. I think that one of the things that you need to kind of consider is also the parcel of land, you know, probably should have been included in the urban boundary to begin with. So, you know, we're talking about 110 acres, I think, of which 60 acres are, are developable or serviceable land. And, you know, for Councilor Oosterhoff, Mayor Patterson, and I, who sit on economic development, we've certainly seen, you know, lots and lots of evidence of, of companies that want to come in here and set up shop. I mean, it's, we're really hitting our stride in that regard. But as Mayor Patterson said, the land isn't available to us. So, you know, to some of the companies who need larger, particularly larger pieces of land. So, you know, you have to consider as well the economic benefit that these companies setting up bring to the, to the community. We talk often about, you know, the the community not having a significant enough commercial and industrial base to offset the fact that we're not getting it, you know, the sufficient revenues from the heads and beds taxes or taxes or fees and lieu. So I think to turn away this kind of opportunity is really to deny an opportunity to our young people. And, you know, we want them, and I remember campaigning on this very issue. We want to make sure that there's industry in this community that's going to help to attract our young people to stay here. And I've got three kids who live in different communities. And that's one of the things I campaigned on. And I think it's very, very important that we say to our young folks, we're not going to turn away opportunities for you to have gainful employment and the ability to raise a family and ultimately buy a house or rent a property, you know, because we don't have enough land or because we turn... You know, because we don't have enough land or because we turn down this kind of an opportunity. This piece of land doesn't have a tree on it. So it's it is ideal in terms of 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 taking that uh into the into the boundary. And I I really hope that that council supports this because it makes it makes a lot of good economic sense. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is councillor Hudson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to be clear about exactly what we're voting on here. I'm looking at the recommendation. And it indicates that staff will, uh, we're they're asking to fast track a review of employment lands and report back in two thousand twenty-two. So with viable policy recommendations, which may include a boundary adjustment to include city-owned lands north of St Lawrence Business Park. Um, the way I read that, and I'd like to be corrected when I'm wrong, is we're not actually doing anything here. We're just going to study it and report back. And I agree, sometimes people apprehend this about that and correctly. And, you know, that means we're on the next step to doing something they don't want to do, and I I can appreciate that. But right at the moment, that's not what we're doing. And so that's one argument I have for doing this. The other is, I just want to find my notes here for a second. The um basically, this, the um not getting much cooperation. The um basically, the really important part of this that I see is the absorption rate. In short, this study, the report says here, this leaves four point one eight acres of shovel-ready land available for sale at at the time of the writing in this report. Well, we all know that's not very much. But the absorption rate or the take-up rate from businesses buying land is generally eighty-eight acres of absorption in about one year. So we're wildly behind here, which is probably the sign of how many lots we've been selling, and that sort of backs up with councillors Hale and Oostroff said. Now, I want to say, if we're going to break the um urban growth boundary, then I am four square on the side of councillor Kylie, especially for residential development, which we have, as far as I can remember, all kinds of opportunity for um houses and uh residential development within the urban growth bound. So I think the concern is no offense anyone mistimed and misdirected. So that I think we can safely support this um this recommendation. I see that CEO has something to say there.
Say it real.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor. So councillor Hudson, you're absolutely right. Um, the only thing we're asking council tonight is to actually fast-track the study that would need to be done anyways as part of the official plan update, but the official plan update will not start until two thousand twenty-three. If we wait and start this study in two thousand twenty-three and finish it in two thousand twenty-four later, um, we're going to be well, well behind on our employment land. So what we're talking about here is fast-tracking this study to be able to bring this information back to council. For councillors that were uh members, uh, when we went through our last official plan update in two thousand fifteen, you will recall that you actually supported the inclusion of the property that we're looking at and we're contemplating, which is the Browns land. Um, at that time, as a council, you supported including those lands because I think you had the foresight um to recognize that we would probably need the employment land before the next official plan update. You will recall as well that um at that time, the province removed it from our um our boundary adjustment. And that's why it's currently not actually in within our urban boundary. So I I just wanted to uh to provide that clarification, councillor Hudson, to your question.
Thank, thank you. Thank you for that. So I encourage people to vote for the recommendation for the reasons I gave and what the CEO said. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is uh deputy mayor Osterhoff.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Patterson. I guess there's not much else to say because obviously I I'm very supportive of this and uh I I wish it was even even a a bigger bigger ask, but uh I think that we have to start with this and uh get the information we need and uh look forward to moving forward with that. So I I I will be supporting this.
Thank you. Next is councillor Holland.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Hopefully, this is really quick. It, um, given what um CEO hurdles just said, it's it the studies, so the report references the studies that need to be done, but does not refer to them as an environmental assessment. And I'm wondering if if that, because I know for the other official plan update, we do an environmental assessment. Just wondering, I know that seems like fine detail.
Mr. Hugo Boss.
Yeah, thank you, dear Mayor Patterson. So um Commissioner Agnew may need to jump in on exactly uh the the details of the of the work that would be studied, but it's a it's a head start on the work that would have been done as part of the OP for uh inventory and uh need for employment lands, uh similar to the work that we had done last time, uh, that CEO hurdle uh referenced. So uh when it comes to uh detailed environmental assessment work and that sort of thing, some of that work was done when we acquired the lands of the city um a few years before twenty fifteen. Um, but anything that would have to be updated would be done regarding setbacks to to wetlands or creeks, that sort of thing. All due respect to councillor Hill, I think there might be a couple of trees on the property that is mostly blank, so there there need to be all those types of things to be done, but that's more at a a development level and and zoning level than than just rationalizing what land should be should be included as part of that official plan amendment.
Okay, uh, thank you. Next is councillor Senate.
Thank you, your worship. Um, it's just, this is probably better for when the report actually came back, but um, this is asking for like possibly an adjustment to um employment lands, uh, expanding the urban growth boundary and my concern would only be with that then set a precedent for in the future, expanding the urban growth boundary for housing. And maybe I could wait for that question if the when the report comes back, but that's the only burning question on my mind.
Okay, I think that staff are ready to answer that question still.
Thank you. And through, Mr. Mayor. So thank you, councillor Ossenik, for that question. Know that the study will focus on employment land only. Um, anything related to housing will be done through the regular official plan update, which we have to do or mandated to do by the province. Um, at this point, uh, we are not looking at anything related to housing. We know that there is supply and we are concerned about employment land. That's what we want to focus on.
Thank you. Next is councillor Neil.
Thank you. And I have to admit, I have a bit of a Pavlovian knee-jerk reaction when I hear expand the urban growth ba- boundary. But as I understand it, this is just doing a study, as councillor Hudson has pointed out. And it's site-specific. And it's only for the employment land portion of this. Am I correct on all three counts?
Mr. Hugo Boss.
So so, yes, councillor Neil, the work will be uh employment lands only is the work that we need to do as part of the official plan update that would come later, but we're going to fast-track that work ahead of time. And the only lands that would be under consideration for an urban boundary adjustment would be these lands north of of the St Lawrence Business Park that the city uh already owns.
Okay. I shared councillor Ossenik's concern uh that this might be a slippery slope to residential expansion, uh, but clearly it isn't. So I can support this. Thank you.
That was unmute. Sorry. Next is councillor Kylie.
Thank you, Mayor Patterson. Through you, I'm going to start with a question about history because I wasn't on council last term. Through you, Mayor Patterson, to CEO hurdle or staff. Uh, why did the province deny this portion of the property back in the last OP review?
So, sorry.
Or CEO hurdle. Whoever would like to answer.
Thank you. And through you, Mr. Mayor, maybe I can get started, and I'm sure Commissioner Agnew will have more to add. Um, so when we did the review of the last official plan update, uh, what the province looked at was the entire amount of employment land that was within the urban boundary. So that included city-owned land as well as privately owned lands. And they also looked at the absorption rate that we had at that time, which of course, based on the information we've just provided to council tonight, our absor- absorption rate was much lower at that time than what we're seeing in the past two years. So they calculated based on the employment land that was available back then that we would have enough supply to basically um carry us through in our medium longer term until our next official plan update. So um, that's what they looked at, and we know they're going to use the same criteria in the sense that they're going to look at privately owned lands still. But we also know that we have almost no supply of city-owned employment land left at this point, and our absorption rate is also much higher now than it was a number of years ago. I I'm not sure if Commissioner Agnew wanted to add anything to that.
Uh, yes, thank you. And through you, there are a couple of other key factors that council should be aware of relative to changes that were made in the provincial policy statement in two thousand twenty that weren't in effect at the time that the last OP review was done for the city of Kingston. So the time horizon has been expanded from twenty to twenty-five years. And therefore, the the amount of land and the time that you have to have the land for has been increased from what it was during the last OP update, as well as there's been some key changes to the PPS that uh give consideration for market choice. And the the market choice consideration of what's available, not just the actual total amount of land that's available. So those key differences uh are in effect now that weren't in effect then and definitely guided the province's decision to remove those lands from the boundary, even though we indicated them as as part of our OP review.
Yeah, that's helpful context for me and hopefully others. Um, speaking of the PPS, as I read the report, I I really appreciated the few key factors that the two thousand twenty PPS asked for, including, I believe it's B on page nine, that says infrastructure and public service facilities, which are planned uh and financially viable over their lifecycle. And I bring this up because, as I remember correctly, we just received a life cycle analysis report on public infrastructure and outlying commercial and industrial uses was one of the least financially sustainable. Is that a correct reading of that report? And how it dovetails with that PPS requirement?
Uh, thank you. And through you, so that the report was mostly focused on residential, although it did get into into looking at other land uses. Um, I would say that some of your your observations are correct for sure, but um the what's in the PPS now has been expanded in that respect, as well as some of the sections on climate change, shows part of any type of policy recommendation that we would bring back for council's consideration. It would be done with a full review of all of the relevant sections of the provincial policy statement, as would be required to to have council make a decision that would be consistent with the provincial policy statement.
Okay, that's reassuring. And I I did trust that was going to happen. And you've anticipated my next question, which is the PPS has updated language on climate change. And in the section that I just cited, it also talks about the impact on the natural environment. And we've heard many times, especially on planning committee, through some of the work done, admittedly, again, mainly residentially, density by design, for example, the power parking, that the further we encourage people to drive, be it for living or working, we increase our greenhouse gas emissions. So would it be fair to say that if we expand the urban growth boundary in the end interim where we still have internal combustion engine, as a predominant mode of transportation, will likely increase our greenhouse gases by exploring land further uh beyond the current urban boundary?
Second.
I'll I'll start, and I don't know if Commissioner Hugo Boss would have anything to add. I think the key part in the provincial policy statement that speaks to climate change and air quality, it's it's not getting into GHG emissions from like account perspective, but really what it talks about is the colocation of of land uses uh from a standpoint of looking at transit supportive and active transportation. So that's really around the climate change piece of making sure that there are options outside of being totally car-oriented and that aren't like that is explored in that one whole section of the PPS. There's many different subsections to it, as well as looking at natural hazards and impacts on natural environment as well.
And I I would just add about that uh locational aspect. Um, having an expansion that's immediately beside an existing business park with many other business type uses and complementary uses that other businesses would be looking for uh provides that nucleus of of employment or the the other services that that they would need or or options for expansion, expansion of existing businesses. So um, that is uh, you know, desirable feature of of where businesses are looking to locate in in a general sense.
Okay, thank you. And then one more line of questioning for me, uh, leaving the PPS behind for a second about the availability of private land and the city's relationship to that. Could staff remind us how much private land is available for sale commercially? I know that the the public portion we're considering is a hundred and ten acres. Is there more or less private land available than the hundred and ten acres that we're talking about potentially expanding to?
Yeah, that's a, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So um I can just find it here in the report, but there are there are more privately owned lands uh that are um either a vacant uh service-ready or vacant and and not yet serviced. Um, I think it's um, sorry councillor Kylie, but it it's um, I don't can't recall the numbers off the top of my head here, but uh, but it's definitely more than what the city has. The the issue is that very little, if any, is actually for sale. Um, it may be dormant, uh, maybe uh not not advertised at all for for lease or or advertised just for lease, which is not um, something that companies are looking for, as you heard from the from the delegations uh tonight. And the majority of the private lands aren't yet serviced or or development-ready, this this shovel-ready uh concept and the um it's the current inventory of those lands has remained basically unchanged for for decades, uh, to be honest with you. So
No, fair enough.
Yeah.
And final question about that, and then I'll I'll make one or two comments and then I'll I'll be quiet. But I was wondering if there is more that the city could do to encourage those privately owned lands to either be serviced or to come online? So we wouldn't feel this kind of external hinterland pressure that is contemplated in this motion. Maybe I'll phrase it this way. Could if this study were to be passed, is looking at uh increasing the availability of private lands within the current urban boundary within play of what would be considered?
Uh, yeah, through you, Mr. Mayor. So a short answer, yes. Uh, and the the report speaks to the staff will continue uh to work with uh private landlords, both from a perspective of if they're willing to sell, uh, this the city uh will uh will discuss that. All of our current business parks uh were were purchased from private landowners and developed by the city into what they are today. So that is a proven model that we have done. Um, and also, as uh Ms. Hurstwood discussed, we don't limit ourselves. When opportunities come, we don't limit ourselves. So we have to buy city land. We look at are there existing buildings on the market? Uh, are there other lands that are privately owned that uh that may be suitable for you? So um, we will uh continue to do that, and the private land will be part of that strategy uh work that we have to do because as far as the provinces can serve with official plan uh update, we have to look at the at the full inventory, and that was discussed earlier. So.
Yeah, fair enough. Thanks. Thanks for that additional comment. Obviously, my perspective is well-known from from all my decisions on council. I think intensity and density and infill is how we have to go. And I would suggest that flirting with this idea is dangerous. And I think that there are lots of great opportunities and creative solutions that staff can find within our current confines. So out of principle, I'll be voting against this motion. And I would encourage others who may feel similarly to do the same because it's possible to bring another motion, which I would happily do, to fast-track the type of economic and to fast-track the type of economic and job perspective that the mayor brought up in terms of a report, but just without the clause of thinking beyond what we're saying is currently permissible with respect to the urban growth boundary. So I'll vote against this, but not because I want to vote against jobs coming to town or future investment, but because I think we have that potential within our current boundaries, especially if we encourage staff to continue their good work in finding those solutions. Thanks.
Thank you, next is Counsel Strout.
I think we've asked lots of questions, so I don't, I don't feel I need to ask more for more information. I'm just going to state two main points that support my position. One is that although these are just employment lands we're talking about, it's pretty logical, despite what Counsel Hutchinson, Counsel New might have said, it's pretty logical that if we increase employment lands in the St. Lawrence Business Park, that folks are going to want to live nearby, because location, location, location is true of everything, including homelessness, as I was saying earlier. Therefore, it puts pressure on the eastern urban boundary, whether that's in this report or not. This report is, of course, not about residential lands, but it would put pressure on the eastern boundary, just like many things put pressure on the eastern boundary. And that's one aspect that I think, whether it's in the report or not, or whether it's in staff's intention or not, it can't be denied. We have to think strategically with this. And so, and my second point is essentially what Counsel Kylie was just saying. It sets a very dangerous precedent. If you are a private landowner, and we're talking about what can staff do to compel? Well, one thing that we can do as council to compel these private lands becoming available is by showing that we will never resort to extending the urban boundary to find more lands. As long as we do that, they can hang on to their lands to a future time, right? When are they going to, when are they going to give the lands up? It's when they've increased in value, when is that going to happen? When the pressure in the city has gone up? So if we keep expanding, that doesn't happen, we keep relieving that pressure. So really, it's all, it is all about the principle of intensification. And I don't think you can have it both ways, I think you have to choose. And I don't think it's about choosing whether we have economic growth or not. That is a false dichotomy that's being presented. I think what it is, is do we want our growth to be in the center of the city, or do we want it to be on the outskirts? And for many reasons, I think we know that the answer for the cost of servicing, the availability of servicing, the availability of housing, and where we want to put the housing, the answer to all of that is to not look outside the urban boundary, even this small amount. So I have to join Counsel Kylie, Counsel McLaren, and others that may be thinking importantly against this, but I would support a similar motion that made it clear that the external to urban boundary portions were not on the table. Thank you.
Thank you, so there's nobody else that wants to speak? I don't have any other speakers on my list, so we will call the vote then on clause seven. All those in favor? Eight opposed? Four, Counselor Doherty, Kylie, McLaren, and Strout opposed. Okay, on to clause eight, potential municipal investment in healthcare initiatives. So, Counsel Neil, point of order.
You may have just been about to say this, but Counsel Ossanic and I have a declaration on the third issue, but I'm sure we would both like to speak to the, as does Counsel Stroud. So I believe all of us would like to speak to the first two and be able to vote on that, those two options that are present.
So, so here's what I'm proposing. Because the declarations of community interest are on just one component of the overall item, what I would propose is that those counselors, you can participate and speak to the items that are in the clause that you do not have a conflict about. And if there is discussion focused on the part that you do have a conflict of interest, then you can step away from the meeting as required. So it's going to be a little bit complex, because it's a little unusual to not declare a conflict on the entire clause as a whole. So you're just going to have to stay sharp.
But wouldn't, wouldn't you be able to separate for the vote?
Yes, to be clear. To be clear, Counsel Neil, please let me finish. So yes, and so after all of that debate and discussion, to be clear, we will have separate votes. And so, yes, that's absolutely fine. We will agree right off the bat that we will do separate votes to.
And we'll plug our ears whenever anybody's talking about item three.
So, maybe just to, just to kick things off, so Deputy Mayor, would you take the chair?
I will, Mayor Patterson, and I recognize you.
Thank you, so the first thing that I will say is, I think it's clear we're not going to get through this item tonight, but we can at least start the ball rolling. So, so a word of caution to Counsel Neil and to Counsel Stroud and to Counsel Ossanic, that I am going to put forward a motion to amend the third clause, which is with respect to the hospital ask. So probably the best thing to do is just to get right into it. So I'm just wondering if the clerks have that available, if they're able to put that up?
Okay, we have a motion to amend moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by myself. I can second, you have a seconder?
So I was going to ask for a seconder, if there is somebody that is willing to second it.
Is there anybody else willing to second this? I can't see, I'm starting to switch my screen around here.
Counsel McLaren is volunteering.
Okay, thanks, I still haven't got my screen around where it's supposed to be. Not sure why it's doing that, tell me one sec. Sorry, I still can't see everybody. So moved by Mayor Patterson, seconded by Counsel McLaren, that report 100, clause eight, received from the CIO, recommended to be amended by deleting paragraph one, sub-paragraph three, and inserting the following thereto. "That staff be directed to include a separate hospital levy on the annual property billing, tax billing, beginning with the 2022 taxation year, in order to provide for a funding request from the University Hospital's Kingston Foundation of $25 million over 10 years. It being understood that the resulting 2022 tax increase for municipal purposes would be approximately 2.1%, and that tax increase for hospital levy purposes would be approximately 1%." Mayor Patterson, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. So I think I'm going to begin by recognizing the concern, I think, that all of us around this table have. It's a similar concern that I know that my colleagues in other communities and municipalities across the province share. And that is this, that healthcare is a provincial responsibility. However, we also see that because healthcare is not being funded to the degree that it needs to be, that municipalities are being pulled into the space delivering and funding healthcare. And that's exactly what we are seeing here. So I'm obviously just speaking to this amendment, so I'm not going to speak yet to physician recruitment or funding of the integrated care hub. Obviously, those things are important as well. Here's the situation. This hospital redevelopment is critical for the future of our community. Eventually, all of us are going to need the services of Kingston Health Sciences Center. Hopefully, for some of us, we may not need those services for a long time, but eventually, that day will come for some of maybe our family or our friends. And ultimately, in that day, what we want is a state-of-the-art hospital that has the best possible equipment and facilities, that obviously can provide the best quality care for ourselves and for our loved ones. The issue is that it's a very expensive project. And we heard earlier from Dr. Pacora that when you're looking at a project that's, you know, close to a billion dollars in size, that the funding formula that is laid out requires a very large amount of local money to be raised. So we can, we can recognize that, I think that there's a problem, right? That this 10% share of local money is not something that we think is right, that it should not be a municipal responsibility, and yet, the fact is that this is what we are faced with. So I think that the best way forward is transparency with the community. So to be clear, it's not a municipal ask, this is not a city project. This is something that's very important for the community, and essentially, the hospital foundation is asking that the community whole would contribute to the project, which I understand. So in order to make that as transparent as possible, what this amendment does is pulls the hospital ask out of the city budget entirely and leaves it as a separate line item, a separate levy on the property tax bill. In a very similar way, that when you get your property tax bill, there's a separate line for contribution to education, which is also provincial responsibility. Well, this effectively is a separate line that's dealing with a healthcare levy. So I think that ultimately, this is the best way to go, that ultimately, this is a flow-through of an ask of the provincial government for an area of provincial responsibility, but ultimately, something that we as a city recognize is critical for our community's future. And so for that reason, I would ask that council would support this amendment, recognizing that if we hold the line on all of our other spending, that our municipal tax increase would be 2.1% for 2022, but recognizing an additional 1% for the hospital levy. And maybe if I could, just before I go further, if I could ask a question of staff, at 1% hospital levy, what does that translate to in terms of dollar terms for the average household in the community? Deputy Mayor, I believe that Ms. Kennedy has her.
Sorry, I was writing down, yes, Ms. Kennedy, please go ahead.
Thank you, thank you, through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So a 1% increase, which would represent that amount for the foundation, would equate to about $36 per household.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, so to put it in perspective, this hospital levy would be $3 a month for the average household in our community. And, you know, I am the last person to ever take lightly anything that would increase property taxes, but in this case, kind of having the healthcare hospital infrastructure that our community needs. And in this case, that's an investment that most Kingstonians would agree with. And to be honest, over the last number of days, as I put out the question, the vast majority of constituents that I've heard from have said that that's an investment that they would like to see happen. So for all of those reasons, I'm putting this amendment forward and would ask for council's consideration and support. Thanks very much.
Okay, Mayor Patterson, do I return the chair to you?
You're going to have to, because it's my amendment, you're going to have to.
I'm happy to do that, okay, anybody want to address this? Yes, Counsel Chappelle.
Thank you, through you, Deputy Mayor Oosterhoff. My question is really about the framing of this proposal to you, your worship. The question is, we have allocated, since we joined council, $1.3 million directly to the hospital. And it's phrased in this particular motion on section eight here, that council approved the allocation of the $1.3 million earmarked for healthcare initiatives, which is not what that has been used for before. So you're already allocating that existing healthcare levy, so to speak, of $1.3 million in this proposal. And then the proposal under section three of this is $800,000 per year for a $10.25 million, but now we've gone up to the $25 million. So what happens to the other $1.3 million that was earmarked? You're basically, we're increasing with your proposal, we're adding the $25 million plus the $750 for the healthcare hub, plus another $2 million for family physicians. So it's not the same, and it's presented in a manner that is misleading. And so if you were going to say that this is the only amount of money that you're looking to levy, we're still adding those other additional healthcare costs under this proposal that you're proposing. And I'd just like you to explain that, as why there's a bit of a shell game here.
Mayor Patterson.
So I would take issue with the framing of this as a shell game, it's not a shell game at all. It's very much a clear recognition that, again, there's a frustration that municipalities are being pulled into healthcare, which is a provincial responsibility. So it is true that my motion to amend is only with reference to sub-paragraph three, which is with respect to the overall ask for the hospital redevelopment. So it does leave number one and number two intact within the city budget. So again, my, my response to that is that this, I think, is made very clear that it's the hospital redevelopment that is a separate line item, but it doesn't in any way take away from the larger concern that we do have is that there is other healthcare spending that the municipality is being drawn into, just as there's other spending on housing and other responsibilities that I would also argue are really better managed by the federal and provincial governments, but we are faced with those effects and challenges here on the ground.
I will recant the word "shell game", but the issue at hand is that the original $1.3 million earmarked for the hospitals is now being called "healthcare initiatives", which is misleading to the public, because that $1.3 million for the last four years that we allocated to the hospital is now being grouped into this proposal with multiple parties that are not related to the hospital, being items one and two. And so now, rather than looking at item three at $10.25 million, plus the proposal of originally that was going to be a 0.6% increase on taxes, we've now lumped out at $10.5 million, made it $25 million, yet we're leaving that other component one and two together. And that's what I'm saying is misleading, because there's still an additional charge on top of that we're saying was previously allocated in the healthcare, but that wasn't approved. That was made, the assumption was made by staff that we would approve $1.3 million for the hospital and then add a levy of tax and cost. So we still have these additional costs of items one and two outside of number three, which we've just increased with your proposed amendment.
Okay, I see Ms. Hurdle has a comment, go ahead.
Thank you, and through you, Deputy Mayor. So Counsel Chappelle, to your comments and questions. So from a staff perspective, we brought forward to council some options of how the $1.3 million, you're correct, was allocated for hospital foundation in the past. That $1.3 million was left in the budget. So from a staff perspective, we are presenting to council options of what you could do as a council with it. One of those options include to remove it entirely and just reduce the tax rate, which you do have the option to do, but we also want to give you some other options that we know you identified as council priorities, one of them being family physicians. When we went through our strategic priorities, that is something that was identified by council. So we want to give you that option as well. So you do have all these different options, and the staff recommendation was actually amounting to a total of $1.3 million. So the staff recommendation did not exceed what was originally included in the budget. So I just want to clarify that in case there's some confusion about the staff recommendation and also the options that are on the table for council.
Thank you for that, Counsel Chappelle, you still have two minutes.
I'll yield my. Uh, I'll yield my time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else um to on to the amendment? Yes, Counselor Hutcheson.
Though I don't, I wouldn't have used Counselor Chappelle's language. I did think, I I do want to check on what is actually involved in this amendment. Um, I think uh that it was opaque and I think we've got a bit more clarity on it now. So the questions are reading the direction. So I I can't see the amendment at the moment. But it says, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, I direct my questions to Americans, it's his motion. That we have 1%. Okay, we have. We have 1% for the hospital level levy purposes. And uh, but it also says, being understood, the resulting 2022 tax increase for municipal purposes would be approximately. 2.1%. Does that mean that the as proposed that the increase would be. For this year coming for 2022 would be 3.1%? Is that the intent?
Who wants to answer that?
I directed it to the mayor, but he scratched it. So we may be.
So I'm happy, I'm happy to answer that. So. Uh, so yes, but to be clear. What this effectively is doing is by removing the hospital ask entirely. What it's doing is reducing the tax rate increase for the city. Right? So for municipal services and being very transparent. Right? The hospital ask is a 1% levy, rather than trying to shoehorn some of the hospital ask into the city budget. Which would increase the tax rate for the city. And then reduce the amount for the hospital levy. This essentially is a. Is a motion to amend to make it very clear that all of the money for the hospital redevelopment is on a separate line.
Okay, now. The, there's a couple of questions, important questions here. That is that the amount. Normally, what we had committed as council to do is 2.4%. This is. When we had the 1.3 million inside the 2.4% for 2022 and. The current year we're in and so on. So. If we come down to 2.1, point three is disappeared. And so that suggests that they're going to be cuts to services. And the real question then is what cuts? Like, explain to me where the point three went. Between 2.4% and 2.1%.
Yes, um. CEO Hurdle, thank you.
Thank you and through Deputy Mayor. So what's being proposed, uh, Counselor Hutcheson is to. To completely remove the hospital ask on a separate line for taxation. And that what that means is that leaves a 1.3 million dollar in the budget. But we don't need the 1.3 million dollar anymore because. If council chooses to, the only other two recommendations to use this money is 250 for the ICH. And 250 for the hos- for family physicians. Totalling 500,000. So that reduces essentially. The amount of money in the city operating budget from 1.3 million dollars to 500,000. For this healthcare dollars and that's why the taxation reduces as well. But above and beyond that, you have the hospital um tax tax levy.
Yes, I mean, you know what we're gonna hear. Nice maneuver. Taxes are still going up by that amount, but. I appreciate what the CEO and the mayor are saying, okay? And then now it's clear to me how you arrived at that number. So my next question is this. Where is the capital levy? Because normally we get 2.5%. That often doesn't meet inflation and we've heard what I had to say about that over the years. And so it's usually 1.5 for operations and 1% for capital. So. How's, how does that work out? What's packaged inside you and takes care of this?
Hey, that's CEO Hurdle.
Thank you and through you Deputy Mayor. So the the 1% capital levy, Counselor Hutcheson is still part of the budget. That remains intact, whether or not council chooses to add the hospital levy. Or just keep the 1.3 million dollar that's already earmarked in the operating budget. It does not impact the capital levy. We've already accounted for that and that fits within the 1.4%. Budget target that, uh, sorry, the 2.4% budget target that council's given us.
Oh, okay. To make this really clear, we have 1%. For the fa- the hospital foundation. And then this question deciding whether you support that or not, I mean. There are really good arguments for it. Then we're saying we're going to increase taxes 2.1%, 1% of which is for capital. Jump up and contradict me if I'm wrong. That leaves 1.1% for operations. So I have, I I've got the binder for the budget, but I haven't read it to see what the inflation is projected at. So the CEO of the treasure could tell me what that is, would help my inquiry.
Yes, Ms. Kennedy.
Thank you through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So um, the last month, the CPI for Ontario was 4.4%.
Okay. All right, well, that's quite a bit more than than we've usually had to do it. So that's projected for for this coming 2022. Uh, budget. So. Something has to give here. And if your costs are increasing by four. Was it 4.1% or something of that sort? And you've only got 1.1, spread it out somehow. How is that going to work?
Ms. Kennedy?
Thank you through you, Mr. Deputy Mayor. So um, the other piece, Counselor Hutchison that you're missing. Uh, is the growth for for 2022. Um, which I believe, I'm trying to remember now, what the paper set was around 2.3%, I believe, for growth. So that also is included in that overall budget. So that that's also how we've been able to to bring that in. Um, amongst other initiatives that staff have done to try to keep the uh, keep the budget within council's target.
Okay, so this is not a budget discussion, so not gonna get into that, but the, it does seem that um. Okay, that the inflation. Okay, I think I I grasp all that and I'm sure I've helped a few other people along the way. But um, so. What we'll be discussing at budget will be what to do with the 1.1. And possibly the 1% for capital levy, which personally I hope we don't, but we might. So. Is there any um? Okay, so basically I gotta think about this.
You have 15 seconds.
I have 15 seconds to say that this is very inventive. I'm just not sure whether I support it or not. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I have um three more speakers, I know. Uh, Counselor Kylie.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Oosterhoff. Through you to the chair or to Mayor Patterson. Mayor Patterson, I'm gonna ask you the same question that I did Dr. Pecora, which is, how are we to stomach this when the province hadn't played? Baseball for some time in terms of raising the the heads and beds tax, right? Like I said, that the last time it was raised was before I was born at KGH. Here we are many years later and now we're asking our our taxpayers and there is only one taxpayer. So to essentially make up for a downloaded provincial responsibility. So. It's the political question of the hour for me and I'm hoping you could respond to it.
Well, Counselor Kylie, I think it's an excellent question and I completely agree with your point. I think that the the issue here is, at the end of the day, this hospital redevelopment needs to happen. Uh, the province is daring to spend probably close to a billion dollars on a hospital redevelopment here. But it's only gonna do that if uh, if enough money is raised from Kingston and surrounding communities. So uh, I I hear the point. I I continue to to press on the heads and beds. But that's a, that's a fee that needs to at least be indexed to inflation. Fact that it's been frozen uh, since 1985 or 1987 or whatever that is. Means that in real terms, the city gets less and less from provincial properties every year. Uh, so this, this in no way is meant to excuse that or meant to to somehow. Take away from that advocacy that I think we need to continue to push and depress at the provincial level. That being said, we have in front of us a major capital project. But I think is important to the quality of life in our community and that ultimately the formula is set. Uh, if uh, if we were to say no to this, then the province will simply take. Its billion dollars and invest in a hospital somewhere else in the province. And I think that would be a big loss for us.
Yeah, I agree. I think that was well said, actually, for that. And I'm hoping the advocacy that I know you continue to do could maybe be expanded with other communities who are in a similar position, but. I'll support the motion because I definitely want to see this happen. It's very exciting in so many ways and. I know myself and probably all of us have had great service through this institution and want to see that to continue, but recognizing. Again, with great frustration, actually personally, that this is just more that the municipality is asking. Or the provinces asking municipalities to do with less, so let's support it, but keep that top of mind as well. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Next I have Counselor Hill.
Uh, thank you Deputy Mayor and I and I uh, I agree with uh. With the proposal that the mayor is making because it's exactly what, you know, and I've heard it from a number of my my fellow counselors that. You know, the great frustration is that this, we are, you know, having to fund what is clearly a provincial responsibility. I mean, it's not just on this, it's actually on the, some of the, the other costs that we're being asked to to foot as part of our regular budget. So. You know, but but it it is about, at the end of the day, what does this bring to us? And what it brings to us is is really a world-class hospital facility. That's gonna serve this community for for a a long, long time into the future. It's gonna generate tremendous economic uh. Uh, inputs into the community through the construction process and then ultimately through the hiring that's gonna be involved in in that. Operation of that hospital when it's completed. You know, it's, it's, we're, we're in in effect what we're asking for and we're. And I think we're asking for it clearly. That's what, why I like what uh Mayor Patterson is presenting here is that we're saying. You know, this is the investment that each household is gonna make. You know, it's, it's, I think you said $36 per household. You know, obviously, we don't want taxes to increase. I've heard from a number of people, I'm sure all the counselors have. Who who are, who are objecting to the fact that we're asking for more and more from them in taxation. But this is also an economic driver at the end of the day. You know, one of the areas of focus for us in terms of economic development is healthcare uh industries. Uh, and uh, and this is certainly gonna be an anchor for that kind of industry. So, you know, the hope would be down the road that we'll be able to to. Even compensate for the, for the contribution that citizens are making. By uh, economic growth that uh, that this project will uh, uh initiate in the community. So that. That will help to offset it. But in the meantime, we're making a very clear statement. To our community that this is something that's being asked of us from a provincial government that is responsible for healthcare. You know, uh, and we don't get the hospital unless we do it. So they really do have all the cards in this game and they, and they, you know, they, they really have us over a barrel. If we say no. Just as Mayor Patterson said, they take their money and they go to a community that's that will say yes. So yeah, I I I think, you know, we, this is one of those situations where we do kind of have to hold our nose a little bit and and vote for it. Uh, because of the, of the potential benefit to our community, to our, to our residents over time. You know, uh, uh, and and I I I don't think it's just in terms of healthcare. I think it's in terms of economic development. I think it's in terms of uh, of uh, of of the hospital as an anchor industry for our community. Um, and I think people will look at this when they see what the actual amount on average per household is and. And see it as more reasonable maybe than uh, they would have if it was just incorporated into our, into our taxes. Because many, many, many people, not just the city, but many people throughout the city and the region. You know, make contributions voluntarily to the hospital every year and uh. Uh, this is sort of a, a, you know, I I know it's, it's forced volunteerism, I suppose. But it does sort of put into so- some context uh, for citizens what that. Uh, you know, what, what it will cost them in order to make sure that this kind of a, of a project can happen here. Uh, and benefits us long into the future. So I think this is the right way to go. I think it really does parallel the education. Uh, example, I think it parallels actually the example that we used with Frontenac County on the uh, on the uh, paramedic service. So. Uh, I I support it and I hope that uh, our other counselors will, will find their way to support this as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Next I have um. Count Doherty. Who, anybody else?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Oosterhoff. Um, well, I suppose too, I think it's really important to communicate. To all, to all taxpayers exactly where their uh, their money is going and. And so, and to highlight that it's going actually municipal taxes are going to something that should be. Supported and funded through provincial taxes. Um, but I wonder, just for this discussion, if staff could explain to anybody listening to this conversation. The funding formula again, the 1910 split and what would actually happen if we didn't pay our 10%?
Okay, who would? Like to answer this question, Ms. Kennedy? Or? Mayor Patterson?
Oh, sorry.
No, I'm fine if Ms. Kennedy wants to answer. I just didn't want her to, I didn't want staff to be in a difficult position.
Yes.
Answer the question, what would happen if we said no to this? I just, but that's a really awkward question for staff to answer. So Ms. Kennedy, maybe if you wanted to respond and then if, if you want to leave that, what last one to me?
Sure, I I was just gonna offer that um, my understanding with this and certainly from reviewing some of the material from the hospital foundation. Um, is that they need the 10% in order to get the 90% from the province. Um, and then as far as the equipment goes, I believe that's not funded from the province, so that is funded directly locally. Um, so again, they'd have to find another source for that, but certainly for the 10% if they didn't have the 10%. The province would not be paying the 90%.
Thank you. Mayor Patterson, do you have anything else you're, you're good with?
I think the only thing that I will add is that there's been a lot of local advocacy for a number of years for this hospital redevelopment. And there are other hospital projects that are on the list as well. So put it this way, there's only so much provincial money that can go to hospital redevelopment. So if it doesn't go here, it is gonna go somewhere else.
So tonight's decision is a very significant one. It really does matter. And and uh, I appreciate you putting the uh, motion forward because I think it will be helpful to educate. To to, so everybody can understand where the tax dollars are going. So I'm very supportive of this thing.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who wants to um, speak to the amendment? And seeing none, then we will call the motion. All those in favor of the amendment as red? Yes. And that is you, is that unanimous or any, are any opposed? Any opposed, sorry? No, all in favor. Okay, that is unanimous. And Mayor Patterson, I return the chair to you.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Oosterhoff. So at this point, it is 11:09. So I will propose then that we will recess until 6:00 PM tomorrow, at which time then we will um, put this item back on the floor. It's uh, clause eight as amended. eight as amended, and then we will continue the discussion. Have a good night, everybody, we'll see you back here at 6:00 PM tomorrow.
Media National's just won two to one, by the way. Thank you.